His opponent, LA County Sheriff's Century Station Captain Joe Gooden. His dish is this vegetarian bruschetta. The contest ends in a draw. The winners are the attendees who get to sample all the free food courtesy of the farmer's market.
Thank you for being a champion in promoting healthy eating habits to the Watts community.
Bon appetit. In Watts, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Again, that was a special once-a-year large-scale celebration, but the community hosts a smaller weekly farmer's market every Saturday at Ted Watkins Memorial Park. And in this week's list of things to do, a musical tribute to unemployment, and it's all about dragons at a local museum, also a summer birthday party for the father of the Los Angeles Harbor. Join Friends of Banning Museum for a fun-filled evening of dancing under the stars with music from the fabulous Esquire's Big Band and swing dance instruction by Rusty Frank. The event commemorates the birth of the father of the Los Angeles Harbor, Phineas Banning. This fourth annual summer birthday concert takes place Saturday, August 18th. Gates open at 5:00 PM. General admission is $25 per person. Pack a picnic and blanket and enjoy the concert, dance instruction, and complimentary dessert on the fabulous front lawn of the mansion. Reservations are required. More info can be found at thebanningmuseum.org. We have all either gone through unemployment or know of someone who has, and so Brooklyn-based playwright, musician, and modern troubadour Ethan Lipton brings to the Grand Performances Series at the California Plaza, a musical ode to unemployment. The central dilemma at the heart of his show entitled "No Place to Go: To Follow or Not to Follow His Long-Term Employer Out of Town," to Mars, to be exact. While the story takes you to another planet, the experience is one that anyone facing job loss can relate to. The 8:00 PM performance on Saturday, August 18th, takes place at the California Plaza, located at 350 South Grand Avenue downtown. Go to grandperformances.org for more information. And bring the kids to the Los Angeles County Museum of Modern Art on Sunday, August 19th, for Dragon Days. It's part of the Ann Dell Family Sundays program. In Asia, dragons are mythical beasts that symbolize good luck. In the West, dragons are fierce and dangerous. Compare these creatures in an installation of art featuring dragons from Lacma's collection and make your own composite animals. The activity from 12:30 to 3:30 PM is free with museum admission. Lacma is located at 5905 Woolshire Boulevard. Go to lacma.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. One local Boys and Girls Club is the lucky recipient of a brand-new playground, and it didn't take a year or even a few months. In fact, you'll be surprised how much can be accomplished when a group of determined individuals get to work. Who says you can't build a playground in one day?
You just built the 2,119th playground by Kaboom!
Kaboom, a national nonprofit organization dedicated to saving play, yes, play, built this playground at the Challengers Boys and Girls Club in about six hours with help from volunteers from the Walt Disney Corporation.
You moved 100 cubic yards of mulch by hand. 22,000 pounds of concrete by hand. Made 12 venusino benches, a shade structure, two planter boxes, two cubbies. You refurbished a whole bunch of creatures, painted amazing mural plants, and planted 20 trees. It's a sidewalk game. So great job!
The Challengers Boys and Girls Club was started in 1968 by Lou Dansler, who took kids to the park on the back of his truck.
He was taking kids to the park on the days when he wasn't working. He'd start out with 12 kids, and then the next week, he doubled that, he had 24 and then 36. And it began to grow and grow and grow. And he was making two or three different trips back and forth to the park for doing something for kids in the community.
Today, Corey Dansler is continuing his father's legacy, serving as the CEO and president of what would become the Challengers Boys and Girls Club. The organization's first building was a Vons supermarket, which the grocery giant deeded over to Lou Dansler for a dollar. More than four decades later, the Challengers Boys and Girls Club at 5029 South Vermont Avenue takes up a whole city block, complete with tennis courts, a running track, and now a playground. The playground will be named Ruby's Playland after Dansler's mother, Ruby.
She was the guiding light and the friend and the partner and the wife that was there all along the way. And this family, everybody, they're truly special. When you think of the number of kids who come here.
And the kids who come to the Challengers Boys and Girls Club will now have a safe playground right on the premises to hop, skip, and dance the day away, all in a day's work. According to Kaboom, currently only one in five kids has a safe place to play within walking distance from their homes. Kaboom is fighting to end that deficit one playground at a time. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We leave you now with the sights and sounds of the Calico Winds Quintet performing at the LA Central Library. See you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: lock it or lose it.
Sergeants, please call the members and tell them to report to the county jail. Great Tom Labange, she's with us. The great Tom Labange. Do you even have a name?
And also, just want to note that the University of Southern California had more medal winners in the Olympic Games, by and far, than any university in the United States, which is a great credit to the University of Southern California, which is positive. And then in between this whole time, Mr. President, what did we go run off and do? We went to Mars with the rover. And you see all that has transpired. So it was 16 days of glory in London with competition. Homegrown, I think Ms. Felix right there in the great San Fernando Valley where she went to high school, LA Baptist. And all the work that those Olympians have done, we think of our very own Anita de France, who is the chair of the LA 84 Foundation, Olympian herself, who presented the gold medals to the women's basketball team, which is very special. So as we start this meeting, prepare, I just wanted to ask that we send up great greetings and congratulations to the people of London. Let's hear it for London, England, in the Olympic Games, Summer Games 2012.
Mr. Garcetti, in fact, members, we're going to move the announcements program to now. So Mr. Garcetti, oh no, we now, we have a quorum. We do have a quorum.
Great, I'll wait till later then.
Okay, so with that said, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon, Buscaino, Cardness, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Caress, Corcoran, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, Mr. Parks second, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves, Buscaino seconds. And that brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone to please, please rise for our flag salute, which will be led today by the council member of the 9th District, Ms. Jan Perry.
Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. I think we should go through the agenda, Madam Clerk, and then we'll do our, we have a presentation today.
Item...
If we could go through the first items.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay, members? Cards?
Yes, there's cards.
Okay. Okay, let's go to the next section.
Items two...
In fact, it's my understanding, if we could hold for Mr. Rosendahl, I think it was item two. So let's hold item two, and if we could go through the other items.
Items two through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, you wanted to hold item three?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alacon, wait, Mr. Reyes is item three, Mr. Alacon is five and six. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Eight and 10 special, and seven for Mr. Corcoran.
Okay, so seven for Corcoran, eight and 10 for Mr. Weezer. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any items left to vote? Uh-oh, here we go, Mr. Labange.
Number nine, hold on the desk, it'll be continued, but I gotta get advice from the city attorney.
Okay. We'll hold number nine. So can we vote on four? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we can.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, what's the next section?
Items 11 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection.
There's a request to continue item 25 for 30 days to September 14th.
Okay, that's without objection. Ms. Perry?
I'd like to call item 20 special.
Okay, Ms. Perry is item 20. Mr. Parks?
23, 24, and we could have them out of order.
Okay, 23, 24, are those the reward?
Yes.
Okay, then we're gonna do those first. Cards?
Cards on 11, 13, and 14.
Okay, so let's open the roll. Wait, 15 for Mr. Alacon? And let's open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, so where does that place us?
Mr. President takes counsel to items called special or general public comment or presentations.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti, are you ready as of yet, or would you, we can still? Okay, then what I'd like to do at this time, before we even do general public comment, Mr. Parks, if you would rise, are the media, are they set up? If you would rise, and if we could do items 23 and 24, which are reward motions, at this time, Mr. Parks, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I have Detective Yant and the Peggy...
Pull your mic up, Mr. Parks.
I have Detective Yant and Peggy Thomas and her family come up to the podium. And also, while they're coming up, we'd like to make a verbal correction on the motion that it should be a $50,000 reward rather than a $25,000. Detective Yant, could you give us an overview of the case, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning. On June 18th, in the city of Los Angeles, at 12 o'clock, Mr. Jimmy Thomas was crossing the street on Western, the crosses, the nearest crosswalk is going to be 55th Street. Mr. Thomas was crossing the street, hit and run vehicles going southbound on Western, struck Mr. Thomas, and left him in the street. The driver of the vehicle is described as a male, black. The vehicle is described as a 2005 Ford Escape, dark in color, was last seen westbound on 57th. The driver never stopped to render aid, never stopped to give his information. The witnesses at the scene were able to chase the driver, but since he was going so fast, they were unable to get any part of the license plate. They had a brief description of the car and a brief description of the driver. Officers responded to the scene. We canvassed the areas for witnesses, any evidence that would have been left at the scene. We checked any and every available security video to see if the incident was caught on film. It was not, there's a lot of security cameras, but they were facing down and they did not catch the incident. We went all the way down 57th Street, checking homes on both sides of the street to see if they might have gotten the hit-and-run vehicle on video, and it was no further on that. We couldn't find any video. I've checked and rechecked, interviewed and re-interviewed all of my witnesses to verify the information, any little possible incident they might have seen that might help us solve this crime. And to this point, we're at a stalemate. We don't have any further leads. Mr. Thomas was struck on the 18th. He was transported to a California hospital, where seven days later, he died of his injuries. Who I have here is the family, the immediate family of Mr. Thomas. He was a 78-year-old Los Angeles man. He lived his life here in Los Angeles, and we're here today because we feel that maybe if we put it out to the citizens of Los Angeles, you guys know that Western Avenue is like a raceway. There had to be somebody out there that saw something at noon, on a beautiful noon day. They had to see something. So we're just asking that we put it to you guys, to put it out to the citizens. Maybe if we can get a reward, somebody will come up with even a little bit of evidence to help us get that much closer to solving this crime and giving the family some kind of justice. We can't bring Mr. Thomas back, but I believe, you know, to let them know that we're here for them, and we're trying our hardest to solve this crime.
Detective Yant, could you tell us your division of assignment and your contact number?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I work at South Traffic Detectives. I'm an investigator there. I've been at South Traffic for, since 2000. I have 21 years on the job, 22 in October. My direct phone number, if anybody has any questions, they want to contact me to get more information, my direct line is 323-421-2535. If I'm not in, which most likely I won't be, just leave a message and I will get back to you by the end of the business day.
Thank you. We have Ms. Thomas now.
Yes, sir. This is Mrs. Peggy Thomas. She is the widow of Mr. Thomas. She'd like to just speak with you briefly, and she's also surrounded by some of her loved ones that could make it today. Ma'am?
Please come forward, Mrs. Thomas, and speak into the mic.
I would like to thank you for this opportunity to be here today, and I would like to say, whoever met with my husband, you took my husband from me, you took my life. My husband has lived in this community over 50 years. He's a locksmith, he was a locksmith. He knew a lot of people. Somebody knows who killed my husband. I want somebody to find this person. You don't know the pain and the sorrow that I feel. I thank you for letting me come here, and thank you for your offer.
I thank you for letting me come here, and thank you for your offer, and I hope this matter is resolved. I miss my husband, and I want all of you to know that. My husband was a good man. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to reiterate, June 18th, 2012, Jimmy Thomas, 78-years-old, was struck crossing Western Avenue at 55th Street. The vehicle was traveling southbound on Western. We'd asked for any information from the public, to contact Detective Yant at 323-421-2535. Ask for eye vote on a $50,000 reward.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and our hearts and prayers go out with you. I had, one of my sons was hit by a hit-and-run driver. He was able to survive, he jumped, and he wound up with a broken arm. I mean, it's just, so my heart goes out to you, and I wanna again ask, first of all, thank Mr. Parks for really being on top of this, he's been a champion for issues like this the whole time that I've been here. Somebody out there, you saw something, you heard something, please help bring some form of closure to this family, and, you know, God bless you for having the courage to come down and to speak before the mic. Mr. Parks is requesting a unanimous vote on this. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, do you have another one, or did we act on? Mr. Parks has one more, and we will go immediately to Mr. Parks's item. Media, I thank you for being here, because you need to send, make sure that this plays, you help us greatly in finding these criminals. Mr. Parks?
Yes, thank you very much. Item 25, I'd ask that Margie Robey and her family come up to the podium. While they're coming to the podium, the issue today is that on April 29, 2011, approximately 12:15 a.m., Christie Ann Robey and another man were sitting in a vehicle at West 57th Street at South Wilton. The suspect, who was seen driving a dark-colored vehicle, drove past the victim's vehicle, made a U-turn, and returned to the victim's location. Ms. Robey suffered injuries from gunshots and was later transported by LA Fire Department to the California Hospital, where she died of her injuries. The detectives handling this case are Detectives Kellum at Criminal Gang Homicide, phone number 2134851383. I'd ask Ms. Robey to make some comments, and ask the public for their assistance, to just walk up to the mic.
I'm gonna speak for her.
Okay.
Basically, I just wanna say that my sister—
Give your name.
My name is April Robey. Christie was my sister. She had just moved out here two months prior. She was coming back to California to start her life with her new daughter, which was only 18 months at the time she died, her fiance, which they was a month from being married. She picked up her friend after she got off work. She didn't know the area, she didn't know nothing about the area, she had never been in the area, and a car came up shooting her. I just want justice for her, because she was never in any kind of gangs or anything like that, she was a good girl, she's always done what my parents asked her to do, and it's just not fair that someone that has nothing to do with gang banging lose their life, and her daughter asks about her every day. It's just very unsettling. So I just ask that you guys put up this reward for our family, because she didn't deserve to die the way she did, and her daughter deserved more. That's all I wanna say. Mama, do you wanna speak, our girl?
Yes, my name is—
Speaking to the mic, ma'am.
Go right into the mic.
My name is Margie Robey, and I'm Christie Robey's mother. She was my baby daughter. She got killed at the age of 32, and December 26th, she made 33. She left her little baby, that was one-years-old and something at the time, and she made two-years-old in October. And that poor baby don't have no mother, she living with her father, and you all know her father is nothing like her mother. I feel so sorry for that little baby, so I'm gonna try to take the baby, and you know, me and my daughters gonna try to help him with her and raise her if we can, we gonna try. She living in Texas right now with her daddy, but we gonna get her in October and keep her for him a while to give him a rest, and let her go to school and stay in California with her. And her mother also is buried in California over in Inglewood Cemetery, what's her name, Mrs. there? Inglewood Cemetery. And she could go over and through the years, you know, we could take her over there and let her know that she had a mother once upon a time. So I hope you all will catch the people that shot her. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, colleagues, the incident is April 29, 2011, 12:15 a.m. Victim is Christie Ann Robey. The detectives assigned to the case is Detective Kellum, Criminal Gang Homicide, contact is 2134851383, and we'd ask for an eye vote on a $50,000 reward.
Okay, members, Mr. Parks is asking for unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I wanna take a couple of items before we go into general public I understand, if we could go to, and then we'll do the presentation, if we could go to item number 1, no, in fact, I'm sorry, item, yeah, item number 1, that's Sean Murphy, David Fort, David, I saw you out there, and John Walsh, if you guys would please come forward. Mr. Walsh from HollywoodHighland.org. Mr. Murphy, you're first.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President. Item 1, I'm for it, thanks.
Good morning, Mr. President. Herb Wesson, Los Angeles Council, City Council, and council members. My name's Dave Ford, I'm the region manager for Southern California Edison. I'm here to appeal to the council this morning regarding the agenda item regarding fee increases. SCE has some concerns about the fee increase and its impact to our ratepayers. What we would like to do, if council approves, is to work with staff and discuss our concerns, and perhaps set up a workshop with the staff here at the city. While you defer your approval of this current fee increase, we think that it would allow time for us to discuss the impacts that it has to our ratepayers, and also gives us time to allow for clarity of the analysis that you have that derived to the current fee increases. I'd like to go on the record stating that we would like to establish some type of workshop with the staff here at the city. Thank you.
Good to see you again, Mr. Ford. Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Here we go, 1 million server requests per year. We'll show our analytics to anybody. I never thought I'd follow Southern California Edison pleading for you not to raise their fees. Let me tell you, it's all wet here from the crocodile tears, because it's not because of their profits that they're against you raising their fees, because they are totally unselfish. This is a private company, unless ours, our DWP, which is socialist. Hurrah for socialism, we have rates, half their rates, and you damn well know that, all the right-wingers who scream about Southern California. And I'm telling you right now, that they will pass on every damn amount of any raise, Southern California Edison, and add 20%. Don't trust them, treat them the way they should be treated, as the great Satan, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, on that item, let us prepare to vote, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, I wanna do, Mr. Garcetti, one more, one more item, and that will be item 2. Item, item 2, we held this special because Mr. Rosendahl made a request. If we could get Jay, I thought I saw you in the back, Jay Handel, Christian Erwin, Michael Corion, Carion, and Tim Bick, please come forward. Jay, come on. Okay, city attorney needs to make a comment.
Just for the record, the public hearing on this was closed last week, this is not reopening the public hearing, however, under the Brown Act, the public comment is being allowed on this.
Okay, guys, please. Just identify yourself and—
My name is Tim Bick, I'm the executive director of the bid, and I believe that they're gonna hold this issue, so do you want me to still say something?
I didn't, I was not under the—
I don't know what's going on.
It was gonna—
Sir, I'll just make—
Can we defer to bill staff?
Go ahead.
Hold this time to see, are we continuing this item? I didn't think— Okay, it is my understanding that it was gonna be continued for one, one week. So, okay, and so nobody else wants to speak on it? Okay, Mr. — No, 'cause you're still in the queue to speak, so you can come forward and speak.
Okay, Tim Bick, executive director of the bid, I've been doing this as a volunteer for the last 10 years. I hope that we've saved the City of Los Angeles thousands and thousands of dollars by helping to upkeep the Brentwood Village after a brand-new sidewalk and tree replacement project that happened in 2000. Somebody came into the city council office claiming to represent an entire block of the, of the village, both the east and the west side, which just was not true, based on the public vote, based on letters sent to the council office and to the clerk's office, that they did not, they were not represented by Mr. Handel, and Mr. Handel's wishing to secede from the bid. Mr. Handel, when he went into the city council office to request a secession from the bid for this particular block, failed to mention a reduction in the bid on the assessment that was collected from the properties within that area, failed to mention that he did not, in fact, represent all the people that he claimed to, and here we are now, me as a volunteer, spending my time down here, wasting the council's time, this thing should just move forward, and let's help the city, like all the other bids, reduce the overall costs for keeping this beautiful city up. And it's great to be an American, it's great to be a citizen of Los Angeles, God bless you guys, thanks for your work.
Thank you. So, is this Mr. Erwin?
It is.
Yes.
Good morning, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to support Tim Bick and the Brentwood Village bid. I represent the largest property owner percentage-wise up in the village, Domino Realty and Gorbrand Lafayette LLC. The bid was passed, it was a vote that was calculated last week, and it was passed by a clear majority, so I'm not quite sure why, why this has become an issue. Apparently, we have a small portion of the bid that would like to secede, and it's being represented by, my understanding of, someone who's not a property owner, and this is a property owner bid. The bid up in Brentwood Village does great work, you know, they pick up the trash, power wash, we do community events. This is one of the gems of District 11, and, and to see the bids, portion of the bid be seceded would be extremely short-sighted, in our opinion. You know, there's the greater-good concept, when you go onto a street and there's one house that's not maintained, and the rest of the street looks immaculate, the street, the whole street suffers. And as a property owner, we're, our parcels are not on the portion of the street in question, but we do see a greater-good concept, and we appreciate all the work that the bid's done. I actually sit on the board of directors of the Westwood Village Business Improvement District, which, councilman corrects, passed last year, and we'll be celebrating our one year anniversary. I'm very active on that bid, and I am a huge supporter of bids. It saves the city a lot of money, puts the accountability in, within the community, and there's, there's an obvious, there's an obvious and clear improvement in any city, any part of this city that has a bid, we see the benefits. So again, I'm here, you know, I'm just here to support this bid, and hopefully the council sees, you know, sees fit to pass it for another, another 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, followed by Michael Carion.
Good morning, Mr. President and council. I'm here today to submit letters from landlords, property owners on our block who are officially protesting and requesting that they be removed from the bid. I'd like the sergeant in arms to please take that. At the same time, I am giving, I am submitting to you a breakdown of the parcels on our block, to show what they voted yes, no, or abstained, and if you, when you take a look at this, you will see that there were three people who voted yes, of which one is now changing their vote and asking to be removed. Two people left, which leaves a total of $1,264 of the total of our block. The second is the no column, which is $8,300, and the third you will see is the abstained column, of which is $5,000, of which 2,891 is not a retailer, it's an office building on the corner, who is a CPA for the bid, and I'm sure that if I asked under a PRA to see their numbers, they're probably getting more back than they're paying in their bid fees. So, the bottom line here, Mr. Chair, and to the council, is that under the Streets and Highways Code, we are supposed to get a commensurate amount of services for the monies being paid, and we're not. So what we're asking is either reduce it, or it's been reduced once, with the obvious reason that it wasn't equitable before. It's still not equitable, and you will see from the letters from the property owners that it has not been equitable, and it hurts our block. While bids do work, and I formed the only bid in the City of Culver City, I've worked with bids around the city, this particular bid is inequitable for the section of the Brentwood Village bid called Barrington Place between Chayote and Sunset. We've asked to try and work with it, we were told we could come today with a public hearing, then we were told the public hearing was closed last week. The property owners wanna have fairness on our block. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, carry on. And just so you know, Mr. Handel, I'm gonna, we're not gonna continue this. What we're gonna do, we're gonna hold it on the desk, in hopes that, since we have interested parties here, that there can be some kind of arrangement made, so I will hold it on the desk. Michael, carry on.
Thank you. All these bids programs talk about saving the city money. Can somebody put a sheet together on how much it costs the city? These bid programs are not self-supporting. They depend on the City of Los Angeles for their trash bags, for their brooms, for everything that they need to clean the streets. So when they come to you and they propose something to you, it's labor. They come and they, they charge the taxpayer for labor. If they are a bid program, then they should be purchasing their own supplies, not charging the city for their supplies. When I talk to the people that hand out this merchandise, there are pallets of trash bags going to bid districts, tens of thousands of dollars every month going to the bid districts in the City of Los Angeles. So when they're talking about saving you money, I'd like to know what money they're saving you. They're not saving you anything when you're, the taxpayer is, is being double-dipped, is what I call it. First, they pay for the brooms, they pay for the trash bags, and then when you got a bid in your district, you gotta be taxed for that, and we've already paid for the trash bags, the brooms, and everything else that they use, the dust pans and everything to clean up, and then it's just dumped on us to throw away? So if the, if the bid programs are working, they should be self-supporting, they should be able to support— They should be able to support themselves on everything that they need, and not depend on the city to pay for all of their supplies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so on this item, we'll hold it on the desk for a bit. Mr. Garcetti, if you are ready, this would be a good time to do your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for both of things. Good morning, Mr. President, and thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, today we are joined by representatives of the Los Angeles Indian-American Community to honor India's 65th Year of Independence and the Declaration of Tomorrow, which is India's Independence Day as Los Angeles India Friendship Day. To start today's presentation, it is my honor to bring Piyal Chakrabarti to the podium for a performance of India's National Anthem and, and the United States National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And I'd like you, I'd like to request to please remain standing for the Indian National Anthem. Thank you.
Thank you, that was beautiful. Thank you. Thank you so much, Piyal, that was beautiful. And thank you, everybody can please be seated. Thank you. India is a nation of an incredible culture, and dance is one of its most meaningful art forms. Before we say a few words, I'd like to welcome Uma Muchina, a student at the Talam School of Fine Arts, who will perform, and her teacher, Nalini Rajah. Why don't you come out here?
This dance is Bharti Natyam.
It's called Bharti Natyam, is the name of the dance.
So oldest...
Go ahead, you can say it.
Thank you so much. Hi, thank you. This dance is Bharti Natyam. This is the oldest classical dance in the world. It was, the Natya Shastra was written by Saint Bharat Sage by watching Lord Nandra's dance, and in 17th century, four brothers developed this dance in the city called Thanjavur in Tamil Nadu State, India. And my students going to perform Ganesh Vandana. Ganesh, Lord Ganesh is the elephant-faced god, who, according to Hindu beliefs, who will get rid of all the obstacles in the life. Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah. You can come out here, dance with him. Or in the middle, if you like, up there, yeah. Okay? Facing this way, please, yeah. Okay? Can you say? Thank you so much. Again, that was Uma Muchina and her teacher, Nalini Rajah. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, over 200,000 Indians live here in Los Angeles, over 300,000 South Asians, one of the world's great and ancient civilizations, and today, the world's largest democracy, with an economy that is growing every single day. Los Angeles is one of the great Indian cities of the world, with a population that is here, a robust community, whose achievements in business, the sciences, and medicine, technology, arts, and culture have made our city stronger and more vibrant. And I'm proud to have so many friends here today with the Indian-American community that are here with me. I want to say a special hello to my goddaughter, Dia, on this today. I've been fortunate to travel to India many times, both as a representative of this city, and before, five or six times, gone from the north to the south, east to the west, and seen the broad breadth of diversity. We think of ourselves as a diverse city, and certainly we are. But you go to India, and from village to village, from state to state, we see really a democracy in action and a great civilization that brings the queues from so many different cultures and indigenous culture together in what is one of the great nations of the world. In meeting the people there, viewing ancient sites and ceremonies, witnessing the economic explosion that's evident in the cities and the countryside, I believe that a stronger relationship with India is something Los Angeles must aggressively pursue. Los Angeles is the western capital of the United States, and it is our nation's gateway to Asia and Latin America. We are home to LAX, the nation's busiest seaport, but today we take a small step to strengthening a bridge between our city and the nation of India. Therefore, on the occasion of India's 65th Year of Independence, by this resolution that we have, the city council of the city of Los Angeles, and if we could have the resolution, does hereby declare August 15, 2012, Los Angeles, India Friendship Day in the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like to give this, on behalf of the community, to Mahesh Parek, our great county commissioner, and to thank all of the folks that are here today, as we declare Indian, Los Angeles, Indian Friendship Day. I also want to recognize the Indian Association of Los Angeles for its efforts every day on behalf of the Indian-American community, and especially for its hard work each year to commemorate Indian Independence Day in grand fashion. Dr. Cial will provide details in a few minutes, but I want to invite the people of Los Angeles to join in this celebration that will include music, food, and cultural programming on Saturday, August 18, in Van Nuys. And before I recognize, introduce Dr. Cial to speak, I also want to recognize some of the individuals who are here today, and this is by no means extensive. But first, Mr. Mahesh Parek, please accept this small token of the city of Los Angeles' appreciation for your more than 30 years of service to the Indian-American community and to the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the United States of America. Please give a round of applause to Mr. Mahesh Parek. Secondly, we'd like to give this to Mr. Gucharan Parle Singh Nath, the president of the Indian Association of Los Angeles. Thank you for your leadership in making your community stronger and making our city stronger. And please accept this certificate too, as a small token of gratitude from the people of Los Angeles, and it would be our pleasure to hear a few words from you as well.
On behalf of Indian, India Association of Los Angeles, we have 50,000 living in San Fernando Valley, and for the last 12 years, we are celebrating India Independence Day. This is a display of our cultures, and we have hundred, hundred, you know, and food booths. Anybody is welcome here. We love to see you there. Thank you very much inviting us. Thank you for this.
Thank you. And we do have Councilman Perry on the queue, when it's appropriate. Hold on, two, two more seconds, just a couple other. I'd like to also give a certificate to Mr. Mobin Khan, who's a board member of the Indian Association of Los Angeles, and thank you for your community leadership, your work with the association, and you might recognize him from some of his roles on television as well. Mr. Mobin Khan, congratulations. And finally, Dr. Parvin Cial, please accept this recognition of your 30 years of community service and the promotion and cooper, of cooperation and friendship among all sectors of society. I'd like to ask Dr. Cial to say a few words as well. Dr. Cial.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, councilpersons, for allowing us to come here today. In fact, the, this celebration and this day, which has been organized by our friend, Councilman Garcetti, is no aberration, because the United States and India share a very common bond of being the greatest democracy and the most populous democracies in the world. And both of us got our independence from Britain. Britain unified India, no doubt, as a modern nation, but India has a heritage which has thousands of, thousands of years old. India chose a parliamentary kind of governance, but the United States Declaration of Independence had a great influence on how India's constitution was written as well. And I, on this particular day, when the immigrants have come to this country, we form the various segments of a salad bowl, which is this country, and we may taste the carrot, but the cilantro is there as well. And on this sweet and savory note, I wish you all the very best of India-LA Friendship Day. Thank you very much.
Councilman Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. From the date of 1947, when Prime Minister Nero, Nehru spoke of a tryst with destiny, we are continuously reminded on an annual basis of the era of deliverance from colonialism. And why this is important is because it is one of the greatest democracies in the world, and it is a battle worth waiting, and it must not be forgotten. In particular, to celebrate Independence Day with family, with friends, with celebration, is an opportunity to renew one's devotion and one's passion, and to be able to pass it on to subsequent generations. And given the size of the community here, we must embrace this celebration too, because your celebration is now our celebration.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. We invite everybody out on, on Saturday. Mr. LeBons, as we know, we have a sister city, Mumbai, is our sister city of Los Angeles. And as we celebrate that strengthening of friendship and the presence of the entire South Asian community, but in particular today, the Indo-American community that is here, we thank you for that, and here's to many, many more years of friendship and deep cultural understanding between us all. Long live India and long live the United States of America. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, for sharing the great diversity of Los Angeles. Colleagues, as this, the next item will go into public comment, but I wanted to recognize Councilman Weezer for introduction purposes only. This next topic is not on the agenda. We cannot discuss it. I'd like to call on Councilman Weezer to introduce our next group of speakers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could ask some of the members of the Peace with Justice and Dignity Caravan to please come up. We have two speakers who will represent and speak to the message that they bring to Los Angeles, and this group is embarking on a month-long voyage, traveling over 6,000 miles through 20 cities and communities, including San Diego, Los Angeles, Santa Fe, El Paso, Houston, Montgomery, New Orleans, Chicago, and New York, before arriving in Washington, DC on September 10. And let me tell you, colleagues, they bring a message that must be heard in the United States as well as Mexico. One look no further than just south of the border and see a human travesty happening before our eyes. We don't need to look at Afghanistan, Iran, Iraq. We just have to look south of our border, where we've had over 60,000 people dead because of the drug trafficking and drug war. We've had over 160,000 people displaced and 10,000 disappearances. It is a human travesty, and these folks are traveling to bring light to this human travesty. Now briefly, before I introduce two of the speakers, you know, in Los Angeles, we have the second-largest population of Mexicans, only next to Mexico City. Many immigrants have felt the pain. Many immigrants cannot even go home and visit their relatives because they no longer feel safe. That's true for me as well. That's true for me as well. Many of you know that I'm from Zacatecas, Mexico. Many of my patriots cannot go home now because we do not feel safe. Some of our relatives have been kidnapped. Zacatecas, Mexico, used to be one of the safest cities in all of Mexico. There's hard-working, humble people who live there day in and day out, making a living. But today, many people live in fear, and something must be done. I want to thank the caravan for standing up. It's not easy. People are afraid. People live in terror. Nobody wants to talk about this injustice. You have risen up and have decided to stand up to some very horrible people, and for that, I applaud you. For that, we welcome you in the City of Los Angeles, and for that, we want to say we are behind you. Today, we introduce a resolution that we cannot hear today because it's not been agendized, but hopefully, we will pass it in the next couple of weeks. We passed it out to our colleagues. And colleagues, I hope you would take a look at this and realize the seriousness of this matter before us, as happening before our own very eyes, south of the border, and we in the United States are just as responsible. We allow guns to traffic so easily down south of the border. We have not provided the type of leadership that we should, so that this could not continue to occur. Hopefully, with our actions, we bring more light to this. So at this time, colleagues, let me introduce to you two speakers. The first is a renowned Mexican poet, Javier Cecilia, who emerged as a leader after one of his own sons was killed in a senseless act in Mexico. The other is Lynn Lyman, State Director for the Drug Policy Alliance. But first, if we could pay your attention to Javier Cecilia.
Javier. The mic is yours.
Muchas gracias. Gracias, Consejales. Gracias, Consejal Weezer.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Weezer.
He has talked about the right issue.
There is a very serious responsibility.
In the North American society and the American government.
I am a poet.
I am the voice of the tribe, as a poet has always been defined.
I am also a victim.
And through my voice, this people that is behind me speaks.
They have children that have disappeared.
Through them, we speak through my voice, the color of my country.
About the deceased.
About the ones that disappeared.
And the destruction of democracy.
We come to ask you to please be aware, as Councilmember Weezer mentioned. You should assume the responsibility, and the government should also assume the responsibility, the government of the United States of America.
And the pain, and the way that this could be stopped.
The drugs are a problem of national security.
And they know this because of the prohibition of alcohol in the 20s.
It's a public health issue.
The weapons are a national security issue.
We don't come to go against the Second Amendment. We respect it.
But we can say that the Second Amendment is being humiliated.
When they place destruction weapons in the hands of criminals.
When they allow that these weapons just go to Mexican territory.
To increase violence.
Behind the addicts that haven't diminished.
And behind the destruction weapons that they sell as candy.
Are our deaths.
Nuestros desaparecidos.
The ones that have disappeared.
Nuestro dolor.
Our pain.
With this attitude, the United States is humiliating the founders, the founders of parents.
The ones that provide a democracy, not just to this nation, but to the whole world.
You should be able to defend.
The founders of this country and the democracy.
You should stop this war and just continue the path of peace.
Thank you very much.
First, I just want to say thank you to the City Council President and members of the City Council for allowing us room on your agenda at such late notice, and a special thank you to Councilman Jose Weezer for his generous resolution in support of the caravan today. We're very honored to be here. The goal of this caravan is to engage in citizen democracy, to stop the US-led war on drugs, and start the healing process for the national emergency that has devastated Mexico. There's three primary issues we're asking for reconsideration, and this is a BINE National Initiative, to reconsider security policy, to reconsider arms regulation, and to reconsider drug prohibition. On behalf of the many families and victims of the war on drugs on both sides of the border, thank you for having us, Councilman Weezer and the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, Mr. City Attorney, there are, or Mr. Weezer, there are limits as to what we can say when things aren't on the agenda. We do have other members that want to speak, so if they were, well, Mr. City Attorney, how do we?
I would caution against having an extended discussion with the other council members about this, because it is not on the agenda.
And members, our day will come when we will discuss this fully, but we don't want to set a precedent where it relates to other concerns and issues that people bring before this body. So if, Mr. Alacon, you could just choose your words carefully and make sure we don't get in a full-blown discussion.
I don't, I don't think I have to choose my words carefully. I want to commend this group for bringing the message to America. Clearly, the problems that we are seeing in Mexico are absolutely correlated to the problems that we are seeing with regard to drug distribution in the United States of America, and more specifically, related to the deaths that are occurring daily throughout the country and specifically in the County of Los Angeles. This is a bilateral issue, and we must discuss it in those terms. I want to commend Jose Weezer, Mexico's native son, on our City Council for his leadership on this issue, but most importantly, I want to thank our special guest, the tremendous poet from, from Mexico, Javier Cecilia. Thank you for turning the negative energy that is related to the death of your son into positive energy for action that I believe will change the debate and improve the discussion and the performance between our two countries in how we deal with the issues of drugs and the violence that is related to that reality. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Welcome. And I want to salute Pilar Martinez, the interpreter back here. Give her a big hand. Pilar. Okay. What's so important, Mr. City Attorney, that there's a public microphone, and people could come up here and fill out a card and voice their concerns, and I think it's so important, this issue, this is a start. You started the City of the Angels, and you reached to Washington. I do want to give a shout out to retired commander of the LAPD, who's a guest here in chambers today, Stephen Downing. You saw his story in Stephen Lopez's column. Good to see you all. Good words. Good words.
Mr. Reyes.
I want to say muchas gracias, the poet Javier Cecilia, to the parents, to the mothers, to the families that are suffering. My parents are from Guanajuato, the federal district of Mexico. I was born here, but with all my heart, the prayers are not only for the family, but for the nation. We are suffering, and everyone should know the damage that this terrible, horrible experience that we are experiencing today. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you as well. I just wanted to add my voice. I want to add a few words. Muchas gracias for this caravan of peace, of dignity, and justice. We need the peace now, not only in Mexico, but in all parts of the world, and this is a global movement. Thank you for your vision. Thank you for your dignity. Thank you for your work. I want to thank everybody here for bringing this caravan of dignity and peace and justice. It is time, not only in Mexico, for many of us trace our ancestry too, but also for all parts of the world, to say that peace should visit every pueblo, every town, every village, every state, and every nation, that the most basic human right is that of life itself, and we stand up to affirm that today. So thank you, and to the family members who have lost theirs, we feel that pain. We understand that. We are with you, alongside you, as your brothers and sisters, and in this great city of peace of Los Angeles, of the angels, we hope that we can see more angels in this world as you move forward. Ustedes son angiles in this city of Los Angeles. Gracias.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank you and our colleagues for your indulgence in this. And last, and briefly, I just want to say, primero, a las víctimas and las familias de todos los que perdimos a alguien queridos, y las víctimas de los secuestros, de todo más que está pasando, nuestros restos están con ustedes. And the press in Mexico, as in the United States, has been in denial. This needs to come to light. Even talking to people down there, nobody's wanted to talk about it for a very, very long time. This has to put up, be put in the open, front and center. We have so many people living in Los Angeles, the United States, that have families and others in Mexico. We too are suffering on this side of the border. It's not only happening in Mexico. God bless you. Thank you so much. Estamos con ustedes.
And I echo that. God bless, God bless you all. Okay, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding, Mr. Labange, don't move. It's my understanding, on item nine, Mr. Labange is continuing that item until Wednesday.
August 22. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, now, I'd like to, and members that are here to speak, we're going to jump around a little bit, but I do want to proceed with at least the first four general public comment speakers, and that would be my friend from HollywoodHighland.org, John Walsh, Mr. Herman, Sean Murphy, and I think Mervin Evans is here. So Sean, if you get to the mic first, you can start. Mr. Walsh, if you could start making your way, and I see you. Go on, Sean.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'm wearing a hat because I burned my head, burned my head at the event a week ago, Sunday. I hope you, gotta get used to it. We need to do something about the homeless people. We need to get them, build some more shelters for them. You're getting out of hand. For those of us who live near the Valley Plaza, I'm asking my councilmember a question. When are we going to get the Valley Plaza? We've been waiting four years. It's time, man. We need a Valley Plaza rebuilt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. It's a very serious issue here, and it is the most controversial thing I've ever said. We have a member of this body who has cancer. He has refused to issue a doctor's statement. The ghouls are surrounding his covered wagon. The politically correct thing for him to do is to tell us the exact nature of his cancer and have his doctor get up and say, he is fine, and he can run for office. And I want you to know that all sorts of horrible rumors are flying in these halls about his health. And until he silences them, and I want you to know that cancer, he, apparently, Mr. Rosendahl is ashamed. There's no reason to be ashamed of cancer. And it's time for us to know his exact health, so the people in his district can decide whether to reelect him, because we've had many cases of people running for office. Sherman Block died and was elected after he was dead. And I'd like to say right now that we should go on Thursday. Yabasta in East LA Chamber of Commerce will be holding their first East Side Candidates' Forum. All the major candidates will be there. The only one who's chickened out is Eric Garcetti. If you want, the address is 2900 Calle Pedro Infante Street. That will be 6 to 8 this Thursday. This is very important. This will be a panel discussion. The sparks will fly. I can understand, as the frontrunner, Mr. Garcetti doesn't want to show up. HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to Mayor Sam for all the details on the Candidates' Night on Thursday. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mervin Evans, followed by Mr. Herman. I just called Mr. Herman's name. Mr. Herman's good. Mr. Evans, you have the floor.
Let me share with you that I'm deeply concerned about the high number of suicides we have in this community. 30,000 people die of suicide every year. Many of them are our veterans. 80 minutes of suicide attempt takes place, but we have 5,000 youth suicides in this country every year. Mr. President, I strongly urge you to ask that your Department of Parks and Recreation work closely with our County Department of Mental Health Services and our school district. There's no excuse to have a youth suicide in Los Angeles. It devastates the family. It devastates the community. If we don't do anything else over the next 24 months, let us zero out youth suicides in the Los Angeles County market. Mr. Rosendahl, your medical records are private. Keep them private. Thank you, Mervins. Visit my website, MervinEvans.com. And once again, I thank the outstanding members of the council, 15 outstanding people who are keeping our city scandal-free. Thank you very much for your outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Herman.
Good morning, residents of Los Angeles. I'm bringing a friend, George, but at the moment, I'm just going to speak on public comment about this. This is still America, and we have American issues that we have to resolve in America. He's with me. He's fine. And so as a result, as you know, out on Spring in New High. Leave him alone. Oh, call my time, Mr. Wilson. I invited you.
Hold his time. And Sergeant, I'm okay if Mr. Herman is okay with having somebody stand with him at the podium. No, I'm okay. No, no, no. I'm okay with that. But if he doesn't want somebody to stand with him, I'm not going to let people just stand.
George is fine. Hold on, George. Hold on, let me.
So no, you do, this is your time, Mr. Herman.
So an unpopularity problem that's happening in the City of Los Angeles is this: the homeless population that reside on our streets, the city must take action to provide them some type of home, some type of residency, and some type of improvement to the quality of lives that we all wish to attain. Accountability falls on you, Mayor Garc- Accountability falls on you, Mayor Garcetti, if you become the next mayor. And what about when Mr. Reyes leaves? Same situation. Mr. Weezer, you're not here, but take action. George here has a great proposal. He wishes to donate on his nonprofit to the City of Los Angeles. Go ahead, George. Say what you need to say.
No, no, no. Now, that we don't do, Mr....
Hello?
No, George, I can't... George, Mr. Herman, you know I can't do that. There's no seating of time, and that we won't do.
...is, he wants to give the City of Los Angeles a donation, a donation to provide housing for low-income people. So, when one of you dare to take on this challenge and step up and speak with him, George and his family will be gladly to introduce a motion of how he wishes to contribute his own life experience and his monies to the City of Los Angeles. And you should offer him that opportunity to take on his behalf what he wishes to do with his monies. In conclusion, Mr. Weezer, this is America. Keep American issues in the City of Los Angeles. And yes, I do feel sorry for the people in Mexico who are suffering these bad consequences.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. And if you could do me a favor, explain to George that he can speak when he fills out, you know, the general public comment card. But now that we've begun general, we've, no, when we start general public comment, you can't put in a card after it has begun. He needs to, he needs, if he has a card, he will be called upon. All right? Now, just as an announcement, general public comment is now listed at the end of the meeting. But I'm going to try to jump back and forth, so people that come here can get out of here early. Okay? At this time, though, we're going to go and do a couple of agenda items, and we will take it from there. I'd like to call on Mr. Reyes, where it relates to item three. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, in front of you is an action to adopt an ordinance regarding amending the ALI Municipal Code to allow for the adoption of a modified parking requirement district. Now, why is this so important? Well, one, it gives us seven options, parking requirement modification tools. What that translates into is better business for Los Angeles, for those who want to open up their establishments, look at new developments, and have an array of parking options and how to address the parking requirements. Today, there are several hoops that every applicant needs to go through to address the parking issue. What this does, it gives the applicant, working with the city, working with a city council member, working with constituents, working with the local neighborhood stakeholders, to address how parking could be addressed, to look at how we simplify it with this menu that provides seven options. You can look at changing of use and parking standards. We can look at the use of new parking reduction permits, commercial parking credits, and the list goes on. So, that being said, I want to thank the Planning Department for their diligence in looking at the code book. With 40% of the staff gone, they're looking to see how we can be much more efficient in our decision-making. We want to be able to be business-friendly. We want to lessen unnecessary pressures on our investors, on our stakeholders, on the community members, so we can have more creative approach to the crunch of these parking requirements. So, we're not creating a rubber stamp, a one-size-fits-all. We're looking at a creative approach and coming to solutions to this very important issue of parking. So, I encourage an eye vote. And are there any questions here? Mr. Rothman? Come on up, because I have a feeling you're going to get more questions. And I want to make sure that you give us a clear perspective. One, we're not taking away parking requirements that currently exist. Is that right? We're not taking away parking requirements that currently exist. We are not doing that. Can you tell us the advantage of this code modification?
Certainly. Tom Rothman from the Planning Department. This is enabling legislation. This creates a new type of tool for the Planning Department to change...
I'm sorry, Mr. Rothman. Say, "Enabling legislation." What does that mean to Joe Thompson?
This does not change any parking standards at all in the city right now. This does not do, this does not change anything. All this does is allow neighborhoods or council districts or certain parts of the city to have the ability to change parking standards on a local level.
If they choose.
If they choose, right. And they can also choose from that menu that you suggested, that you mentioned, those seven items. They can pick and choose, so they can increase parking, they can decrease parking, they can, they can change the parking standards to meet whatever issue is needed to be addressed in that, in that local area.
An example, let's say the installation comes before a neighborhood. There's a nearby lot that is empty 80% of the time. They don't use it, but the one that's coming in could have commercial credits if they have a relationship that allows for all the parking to be used without having to increase the park requirement on that specific site physically because of the abundance of parking that's not being used next door. It allows for that flexibility. Am I right?
That is exactly right. We use that scenario twice in the city. That's called our commercial parking credits. But since we don't have a geography created, this would be a great tool to at least say, "This area needs to be addressed. We want to use commercial parking credits in that district."
So, colleagues, as our city continues to grow, as we have more demand for business, we have to be much more flexible and creative without taking away the discretion of the local stakeholder...
Right.
...to choose how they want to see their neighborhoods improve in having an array of options and how to make it easier to create business much more predictable for the local neighborhoods, because they have the discretion to choose as you coordinate with each council office and with the city family, who's in charge of making sure that consensus building is actually occurring before these changes are allowed. Would that be accurate?
Exactly right.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for drafting this ordinance and moving forward. You know, my wife's cousin, Dr. Shalina, opened a business a year and a half ago in downtown San Pedro. And had this ordinance been in place then, it would have allowed a smoother transition in opening her doors, because she did have some parking issues. I will let you know this. Yesterday was a historic day in the City of Los Angeles, where we heard from the business owners and made parking easier by eliminating over 600 parking meters in my district. And this ordinance will continue to help this effort in supporting our small-based businesses in my district, specifically in Harbor City, Wilmington, downtown San Pedro as well. This ordinance will be a valuable tool, especially to businesses struggling to open its doors during the economy, during this struggling economy. I know of several businesses in my district who've not been able to open their doors because they've had a hard time complying with the off-street parking. So, with this, we all know that, as Mr. Reyes indicated, one size is not fit all. But I believe that it's helpful to have a variety of options for new developments so that they match the character of the surrounding community. So, I too will stand, Mr. Reyes, and support this and move forward, and I also ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian.
Mr. President, and I certainly agree, Mr. Reyes, that one size does not fit all in our diverse city, and there is a great need for as many tools as we can for planning that is specific to different communities. The only question I have here is that consensus-building process that you described, Mr. Reyes, what I'm trying to understand is how do we ensure, I mean, I know that that's available to us, but how do we ensure that, in fact, consensus is derived? How do we ensure that the neighborhood councils in each neighborhood, in fact, have a voice in this? Because while this can be a very effective tool to make it easier to, for our business community, it may be appropriate in certain areas, may be less appropriate in other areas. So, what is the mechanism by which there is a mandate of a voice for the local communities in playing a role in deciding whether there is such a consensus?
Essentially, to implement one of these supplemental use districts, it's a legislative action, just as I am here today, to create the shell document. Every time the Planning Department initiates or the council initiates one of these supplemental use districts, it must go to the City Planning Commission, to Plum, City Attorney's Office, into City Council. There's no notification to all the neighborhood councils that are within that district, so there will be full disclosure. There's not going to be any surprises. Everything will be open for at least three public hearings. So, it's a legislative act. It's a zone change. To make it simple, it's just like a zone change.
Mr. Weezer.
Thanks, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Reyes for shepherding this through the process and through Plum, and also want to thank Tom Rothman for working on this. I know it's not easy, as we try to think more creatively sometimes about how we could better improve our local communities and bring economic development. And generally, as was said, this really just brings flexibility, right? If an area wants to increase parking requirements, they can get it. If they want to reduce parking requirements, they can get it as well. And this is going to be very helpful for our streetcar project, where we intend to put a pilot project there as well. Some of the local stakeholders have been looking forward to this. We actually worked on one of these back in Eagle Rock, where we put in a pilot program a few years back, and it helped us quite a bit. Now, instead of us trying to figure out how to get through the maze of these policies and codes, we have something in place that's going to make it a whole lot easier. So, thank you for your work, and I think that this is something that's going to pay huge dividends, both for new businesses that want to open up and after find parking as the impediment for them to open up, and also going to continue to provide local control to neighborhoods who want to describe for themselves how their neighborhoods should be. So, thank you for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti. And members, we're going to have quorum issues.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank you, Tom, for the work on this and making sure this moves forward. We've had this experience in Atwater Village, where we have, just like Mr. Buscaino was talking about in San Pedro, our ability in a one-off, as opposed to now being able to do it much more flexibly, changed the parking requirements where we had city parking lots, has really resulted in a very pedestrian-friendly area. Atwater Village is a transformed place from what it was a decade ago. I think it's a good model for what we can do throughout the city when we have flexibility on those parking requirements. This was something that had the backing of everybody who lived there. New businesses came in on Glendale Boulevard, which for a long time had a lot of either vacant or underutilized storefronts. And now, instead of just being a thorough pair from Glendale to downtown, Atwater Village is a real model, a commercial district. So, this is exactly the sort of thing that other communities can seek to do through this and do it much more quickly and much more easily than having to do it as a one-off in each of these districts, in Eagle Rock and in Atwater Village, et cetera. So, thank you, Mr. Reyes, for helping push this forward.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I want to acknowledge that a number of my constituents have expressed their concerns that this will be too flexible in terms of the ability to reduce parking in a city that, and especially in a district, that is already much too short in parking. So, on that basis, I'm going to vote against this item.
All right, Mr. Reyes.
Again, just to recap, one, this only gets triggered if you support it. If someone from the community asks for it, the neighborhood council wants to generate it, it comes from you. It does not come from above down. It comes from you. Two, the process itself has a zone change, which is de facto a change of use of the land. We'll have its series of hearings from Planning Commission, to Plum Committee, to Council. So, be a very thorough debate, discussion on its merits, both positive and negative. So, we will have a rigorous discussion every time this appears in our radar. And three, it's business-friendly. From my point of view, we need to be a business-friendly city. Our revenues need to increase. We have to stop cutting our programs, our services, and find ways to generate money for the city. If we can get out there that this city is business-friendly, and we stop the bleeding that occurs every time a business cannot open its shop because it needs one or two parking when it already has eight because of the stiffness of the code, that's what we need to change. The codes have not changed since the 1940s. It's time for us to understand that we need to be updated, current, flexible, but never, never compromise the discretion of our constituents. That's my commitment to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have cards on this item. Sean Murphy. Okay. Yehick Keshian, and I apologize in advance. Okay. Evelyn Alexander, Jeff Jacoburger. Okay, go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am for this project. We need more parking spaces and more redevelopment. They should not stall.
Okay, next. The Central City Association?
Good morning. Yehick Keshian with the Central City Association of Los Angeles. CCA would like to offer its support for the Modified Parking Requirement District Ordinance. In a city as varied as Los Angeles, urban development does not stand to gain from implementing a one-size-fits-all approach to govern parking. What may make sense in less-dense areas only acts to stifle development and investment in our city's transit-rich urban core. The ordinance before the council today is a sensible 21st-century approach to parking. It considers a variety of management programs to prevent unforeseen parking overflow and traffic congestion-related issues, while still enabling individual projects with merit the opportunity to request reductions in parking. To witness the dramatic change that a simple modification to parking standards can have on urban investment, we should look to the success of the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance, easing the parking requirements on the adaptive reuse of historic buildings, unshackle these underutilized buildings from rules that didn't make sense. And in the end, we all witnessed the laws of supply and demand and how they ushered in creative and more appropriate solutions to downtown's parking needs. This ordinance will allow council to better partner with its diverse communities and neighborhoods to come up with flexible parking standards that reflect local demands and needs. We ask council to adopt the report and to set reasonable application fees to govern the use of the proposed parking requirement modification tools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Good morning, councilmembers. Evelyn Jerome Alexander here today representing Fast Fixing Angelino Stuck in Traffic, a nonprofit organization dedicated to advocating for solutions that will improve mobility throughout Los Angeles. The Modified Parking Requirements District Ordinance before you is the beginning of a new way to plan in Los Angeles. It recognizes that we can walk a block or two to a restaurant, or a movie theater, or a wine bar. We can park once, using previously underutilized parking structure or a church parking lot that sits vacant for six days a week, and visit more than one storefront in an area. Thinking this way, planning this way, will improve the walkability of our commercial and mixed-use areas and benefit the entire community by bringing these areas to life. This ordinance will serve as a tool, a flexible tool, for the Planning Department to work together with developers, business owners, and the community, who all bring value. FAST strongly supports this ordinance. We'd like to recognize Councilmember Jose Weezer for initiating this process after a successful pilot program in Eagle Rock, and Plum Committee Chair Ed Reyes for shepherding the ordinance through, as well as Planning Department staff Tom Rothman. We look forward to continuing to work with all of your offices to improve mobility in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Jeff Jacoburger with Civic Enterprise Associates. We've had the pleasure and honor of working on some of these innovative parking programs, including the parking credits programs in Atwater Village and Eagle Rock. There've been a lot of discussion about this being a business-friendly proposal. I think it's also a people-friendly proposal. We've done some work in the City of West Hollywood, and through an analysis of their parking, we've actually found that they actually have a lot more parking supply than their demand is. And so, what they've been able to do is, with a new development coming through, actually require less parking and require the developer to provide a park instead of parking. So, by having data-driven solutions to our parking issues, we can actually, a lot of times, obtain more amenities and things that provide greater benefits to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes, one no.
That item will be held over for one week, until August 21st.
Okay, now, it's my understanding that we're going to have a departure of a member, so we need to deal with the other ordinance that's left on the agenda, which is item two. It's my understanding that everything has been worked out and that Mr. Reyes will let us know what the agreement is. us know what the agreement is.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Councilor Rosendahl's staff for their diligence, their hard work. As you know, Councilor Rosendahl does support the right of self-determination by the businesses that did not prevail in the ballot process, but he's eager to work on a resolution for these businesses. Unfortunately, if we don't move today, the Brentwood Village BID would be in peril. He urges to move forward today and is eager to work with both parties to achieve a reasonable compromise. He's asked for support to move the item today. Thank you.
Mr. President, also, real quick, the ballot tabulation results for Item Two are 69.88% of ballots cast in support and 30.12% of ballots cast in opposition. The weighted value of the supporting ballots exceeds those in opposition, and a majority protest was not found to exist. Therefore, Council may authorize proposed establishment of the Business Improvement District.
Okay, so on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now we can go to Item Five quickly.
And the motion, five A, has been circulated.
Mr. Alacón.
Councilmembers, I called this special merely to change the amount of the grant. There was an error in the amount stated in the committee, so this is a motion to amend. I've submitted it in writing, but I will read it. I move that the Arts Parks Health and Agent Committee report on, and, report... I'm sorry, I'm correcting it as we speak. Report on the resolution relative to continued funding applications for 2012-13 General Childcare Program, CCTR, and 2012-2013 California State Preschool Program, CCSP, I'm sorry, CSPP, Continued Funding Applications for Subsidized Preschool Services at the Jim Gilliam Childcare Center. Council file 10-0101-S2. Number five on today's agenda be amended as follows. Number one, delete recommendation number three and replace it with the following new recommendation. Number three, authorize the RAP's chief accounting employee to establish the necessary accounts within Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 205 to accept the 2012-13 CDE CCTR grant in the amount of $5,452 and CSPP grant in the amount of $161,175 for subsidized preschool services at the Jim Gilliam Childcare Center as detailed in the July 12, 2012 RAP report attached to the Council file presented by myself and seconded by Mr. Weston.
Okay, so that item is now before us. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ms. Pierman, don't go anywhere. Donna Pierman, do not leave. You're next. Sorry about that. What's the tabulation?
Twelve ayes.
The items adopted as amended.
Okay, at this time, I would like to take up Items 13. And I'd like to call up John Walsh. And Mr. Herman, I'm going to ask you to do me a favor. I just saw Ms. Donna Pierman exit. Could you look and see if you could bring her back? I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much. So we'll get Mr. Walsh and hopefully Mr. Herman. She was walking towards the back, Mr. Herman. Yes, Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. What is, what's very important here in Number 13, and I'm talking to the 70,000 people who are watching, this sounds very innocent. It's an exemption from civil service. Once they exempt, now you go back to New York, they have hundreds and hundreds of jobs exempt that the mayor of the city of New York hires, straight. What this is doing is removing from civil service a job so that Antonio can put a friend of his in. You know it. I know it. Bill Rosendahl, if he's conscious, knows it. We all know that this is what's happening here. It's an exemption, and they want more and more. I would like to know how many exemptions from civil service the mayor controls. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
Okay, and just so you know, Mr. Walsh, I do talk to Bill every couple of days, and he's up and about and feeling better. Ms. Pierman, please come forward.
Make a statement. Get him, Mr. Walsh. Wait, hold it for a second.
Donna, I mean, Ms. Pierman, please come forward.
Yeah, sorry. Well, it really, really hurts having to go all the way down here when I should be in Van Nuys.
Stay on this subject.
Apparently have the money, and you have enough to try to make this, this person exempt from the civil service. And so this is not right, what you're, what you're doing, having this pointy over that. So you have the money, and you know how to spend the money, and you have all these people that really are not needed. So on the next one, I'll figure out something better to say for right now, because I'm exhausted from trying to come down here. So vote no on this, and I have to talk to my friend to find out a better way to say this.
Okay, and Ms. Pierman, I'm going to be calling your next item will be next. That's Item 14. So you may want to give some thought on how you wish to address us on that item. Okay, Mr. Corretts.
Just for the record, there is a limit to the number of these kinds of exemptions at 150, and we try to stay substantially under that limit. And we discuss these on a case-by-case basis. It's not because we're attempting to give the mayor additional appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we're going to move to Item 14. Ms. Pierman.
Just to come back. You were saying?
Ms. Pierman. I told you I was going to call your item next. I gave you warning. We're on Item 14.
Anyway, I see this is casual. I don't care if you say there's only a certain number of appointments. Apparently, that's way too many appointments of all these ones that are just considered your friends, and I really do believe that half of these things are not necessary. And you're talking about you're trying to save money, and I don't believe that you're trying to save money anywhere. I'm sorry that I couldn't come up with it as good as well as Marion could say it. Anyway, you'll hear all about how I feel over a general public comment, and I don't believe we need these appointments. So I said, I think you, I would love to hear you say vote no, and unfortunately, I won't have time to say it. Hello?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Pierman. And you said it well and kind of changed the mood of this place, so I appreciate that. Let's, on Item 14, Madam Clerk, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now I'm going to do three quick public comment cards. I want Bill Hui, please come forward. Ronald Ely, Kathleen Ely, please come on forward. Mr. Hui, you start.
Good morning, Council President Weston and members of the L.A. City Council. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition. We're an organization that believes in equality under the law for housing providers and renters. I have with me Mr. and Mrs. Ely, really good people. They're housing providers. They run beautiful buildings. They pay all their bills on time, talking about creating a city that's business-friendly. For 20 years, they've been mailing in their registration on time. They own buildings in District 15 and District 1. Well, apparently, the check got lost in the mail, the paperwork got lost in the mail. The Housing Department calls them up and wants $8,000 in fines. That's a 300% fine. What agency in the government, not even the IRS, charges 300% for paying a bill late? And they have a record for 20-some years, they've been paying on time. So it's obvious the check did get lost in the mail. They mail in their, they fill out the form, and they put in their credit card, and the city charges their credit card. This is their history for 20 years. They don't, they're not bad landlords. They don't have a lot of violations. They're excellent landlords. The paperwork got lost in the mail. It happens. Why should they pay $8,000? You know, most landlords in L.A. own other businesses. So when you, the predatory LHD, which the skip and the reap thing were made to go after evil landlords, and now those people are long gone, now they're using that predatory mentality against mom and pops, and these are good people. I would like either Mr. Reyes or Mr. Busciano to get involved. I mean, how can they be charged $8,000 on a late fee? 300%? No business in America can legally do that, and here they're doing it to fine people. This is outrageous, and this why, this is why L.A. has an image of very, being very business-unfriendly. I mean, that's gangster rates. That's loan shark rates, and they shouldn't have to pay it. Thank you very much, and I'm available to talk with Mr. Busciano or Mr.? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And if you go to the side where Mr. Busciano will have, Busciano will have a staff person. The Ellys, please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilmembers. My name is Ronald Ely. My wife Kathleen and I are rental housing providers in Council District 1 and 15 and have provided rental housing since 1975. In February 2011...
They're going to help us. You don't have to speak.
Let him speak, Bill. Go on, Mr. Ely.
We mailed our Housing Department registration payments on time, as we always do. The Housing Department claimed that they never received that payment and demanded over $8,000 in late and delinquent fees. This is 150%, but we are limited to a 3% per year rent increase and a 6% late rent charge. We immediately sent in another payment by certified mail for the original amount and filled out a request for waiver of late fees form that was denied. These are facts. Our credit is perfect. I have a credit report with me today. Our Housing Department payment of 2011 is only, is the only late claim in existence, and it is false. We work hard to serve and are honest and fair with our tenants. We had sufficient credit on our credit card to pay the 2011 Housing Department bill. There was no logical reason for us not to pay this bill on time, and we did pay it on time. The Housing Department claims our original payment was never received, but I can prove every single thing I have said here today with proper documentation. Michael Prendergast of the Housing Department offered to waive part of the charges, but I told him this is like telling me he's only going to cut off part of my legs for something I did not do. We have repeatedly called and emailed the Housing Department, Mayor Villarreal Rosa's office, our City Councilmembers, Ed Reyes of Council District 1, and Joe Busciano of Council District 15. This has not been resolved to date. This is a matter of principle and a wrong penalty that must be corrected. We need and earnestly request that the Council come to our aid in this matter. Please assist us in getting these fees waived and all records of our falsely claimed later delinquent payment expunged immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask, I remember when I chaired Housing that we got into this issue. So I'm going to ask Mr. Cardenas' office to maybe brief me on where we are now, the reasons why it was difficulty in changing that size of a, of a fine. I just cannot remember. I'm having a senior moment right now, and I just don't remember what the justification was that they gave us. So with that said, Ms. Ely, Kathleen Ely?
Hi, good morning. Well, I was the first, first one to open the bill, and when I saw it, I just kind of freaked out, and I called the Housing Department, and, you know, they just gave me the runaround. So I thought, well, I'll call the mayor's office. And I remember talking to this one guy. He goes, lady, you have to get it together before you call a councilman. I says, I will, I will. But I remember calling Ray's office a lot of times, talking to the girls down there. And one of them even told me, she goes, oh, my goodness, I would have had a heart attack if I would have opened these bills up. And I've called the Housing Department so many times, and when you call the Housing Department, it's not like a five-minute call. You're on hold between like 25 and 45 minutes. And I pay thousands of bills. I know when our property taxes are due. I know when income taxes are due. I know when the business license are due. And it's just not fair. And I remember during the 80s, so many of our friends lost their buildings. We kept ours, and we were eating beans and rice, and our tenants were eating better than we were. And I just, you know, our credit is so good, because I remember one time we had a loan, we had a loan done, and the guy was walking around showing the other people our number because it was so good, because credit is so important. And I just swear, we've been taking so much time on this, and I just wish it would end, and thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down, Mrs. Ely. Thank you very much. In fact, Mrs. Ely, I need to invite you to come to my home once a month and help me pay my bills in a timely fashion. With that said, City Clerk, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, we are on public comment. Now, I was thinking about Mr. Huizar, because, Mr. Huizar, we are now going to the items that you held, which were Item Eight and Item Ten, and it's my understanding you're going to combine them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Huizar, Eight and Ten.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. Both of these items are related. Number Eight asks to get a report back on the Boyle Heights Community Plan that has been stalling for some time. And Number Ten actually comes up with a solution to fund us continuing with the planning for the Boyle Heights Community Plan. We had a public hearing in committee, but, Mr. President, I'm asking that we could open it up to at least two speakers. But let me, if I could introduce the item first. And as was mentioned, we recently finished the Hollywood Community Plan, and that was a huge undertaking. And we are stalling on a number of other community plans that are in the pipeline. There's been a bottleneck on updating our community plans from the Planning Department. A lot of that is due to funding with their cutbacks the last few years. We have cut back on updating those plans. But let me remind you, colleagues, that updating our community plans is probably one of the most important things we can do when it comes to planning for the city. That will show what the vision is for the future of a neighborhood, what plans, projects we approve or not approve for those communities. And for us not to be updated on a majority of our plans is not the right way to plan for the future of the city. But here with the Boyle Heights Community Plan, it had already started. It stalled. The reports are there. We need to move forward with it so that those reports do not get stale, and it ends up costing us more in the future should we pick it up again. I want to thank the Planning Department, the CLA, and the CAO for coming up with a creative solution on how to fund for us moving forward with the Boyle Heights Community Plan. I want to also thank Councilman Reyes in Plum, and particularly, I want to thank the community, and particularly ELAC, for supporting this, never letting up on it, reminding my office, being honest all the time. I think your efforts helped us move the ball, move the needle on the record, but nobody uses that anymore, but you know what I mean, right? It was a joke. But thank you for your efforts. And, Mr. President, I ask if we could allow two speakers to speak. I know we had public comment, public hearing in committee, but if we could allow, for those of you supporting this, if you could just stand up and show the presence who've been, people who've been standing here. Thank you for coming out. I know you've been very patient sitting here for a while. I appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and, Mr. Huizar, I do remember moving the needle on the record. Okay? I remember moving the needle on the 45. Okay, so I... Okay, so now what we're going to do, Mr. Huizar, I know you requested two additional minutes. I'm going to do three, and the three people that I'm going to call forward are Mr. Jose Fernandez, Eddie Padilla, and Mr. Herman. If you'd still, please come up and get in line. Jose Fernandez, Eddie Padilla, Mr. Herman. One minute each, right, Mr. Huizar? One minute each.
A little bit over, if you're okay?
Go. No, we don't do that. It's on you. It's on you, so speak well.
All right, no problem.
So, good morning, Council. My name is Jose Fernandez. I'm here representing East LA Community Corporation as a community organizer and as a resident of 21 years in Boyle Heights. First off, I want to thank Huizar for his leadership and his team over at CT14. Basically, the Boyle Heights Community Plan has been stalled for two years. You know, between 2006 and 2010, over 400 residents of Boyle Heights, working-class families, did major work on the planning, on the planning side of the Boyle Heights Community Plan. And we're at risk of that data becoming old. So right now, it is strongly suggested... So right now, it is strongly suggested that y'all prioritize the Boyle Heights Community Plan and that you move on and hire the two people, the two planners, that will be responsible for securing a safe and livable Boyle Heights and ensuring that our families keep progressing and, and that, you know, they, they have a community they can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Padilla, followed by Mr. Herman? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Edward Padilla. I am the president of Casa 0101 Theater in Boyle Heights. I'm also the president of the Boyle Heights Neighborhood Council, but I'm also here as a resident and a concerned stakeholder, and I urge you to please vote yes on this particular item. We are having a lot of wonderful positive changes happening in Boyle Heights, but there's also a lot of developers and a lot of people coming in trying to make changes that may not necessarily be the best for our community. This very, this community plan is very valuable. We ask you to please reinstate this process that was already in motion. Thank you so much.
Now, thank you, Mr. Herman.
It's good to see that things are moving forward now in Boyle Heights, but these stalls upon stalls shows the lack of incompetency where the city and whoever's responsible and accountable to push these actions forward. But thank you for doing so, because I'm sure we're all here in great interest in the way Mr. Weezer will impact our community now and set forth the motions under his administrative authority to see that these projects that we've been requesting are done and go forward from this time on. And going off note, yes, the Broadway corridor should be second when it comes to Boyle Heights, because we deserve what we've demanded throughout the years, Mr. Weezer, and we're holding you accountable to fulfill those, not in 2013 for reelection, but now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, next item. Ms. Perry, are you ready on item 20? So, Madam Clerk, next item will be item 20.
A amended motion 20A has been circulated.
Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, it's an amendment to item 20, and it's a technical amendment to make sure that the original development agreement is honored by the subsequent or successor
There are no cards on this item, so let's prepare to vote on Ms. Perry's item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. It's adopted as amended.
Okay, adopted as amended. Now I'm gonna take two more public comment speakers, Donna Pierman, Michael Carrion. Please come forward. Donna Pierman, Michael Carrion.
How can you do this to close down San Isidore Hall? My legs hurt a lot. They're, they're feeling really numb from the, from the cold. Think of the physically disabled. It was, um, it was hard for me to come here, and I'm exhausted. Think about, and I wish Marion could be here, because you need to open up San Isidore Hall. But what about the ones who are harder ones, so the more physically disabled, the ones in wheelchairs, the one in motorized scooters, and the walkers, and those who are blind and the near-blind, and other disabilities? It's as business as usual in Spring Street. You need to open up San Isidore Hall. You want to shut us down. You don't want to speak about Prop R, the extension to the sea. It's dangerous. We all live in an earthquake country. We, we have many deep earthquake faults. They want to, and tunneling under it is very extremely dangerous. They want to contend, they, folks, they want us to continue paying sales tax. It could, and for this subway to the sea, but it could sink California and even more in the United States because earthquakes spread. Then they also want this bullet to Palmdale to Las Vegas. That should be, you should be having one to go within the valley to go to Las Vegas, to valley to Palmdale to Las Vegas. We should spend enough on these natural rail projects. Our buses are running worse than ever, especially in the valley. They don't care about the valley. Shows when they don't want to hear the voices from the valley. I wanted, I wanted to say vote for Eric Garcetti. I'm sorry, he's not here. Vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor. He voted no to end the video conferencing because he believes in the voice of the valley. But you believe in car dealerships. You don't care to save money. It's ridiculous to shut down the voice of the valley, voice of the disabled people. Or you are the, the voice of the developer. You are the voice of the film industry and anybody that makes you look good. You are the voice of the rich people in the CRA. That's who you are the voice for. You're certainly not the voice of the, of the people here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pierman. Thank you. Michael Carrion. And then we'll go back to some city business. Michael? In fact, then we'll just go do a different part of the city's business. This is every bit as important as the items we deal with. Michael Carrion.
Can we have the city attorney and the officer here? Please be quiet. They keep carrying on a large conversation while somebody's trying to talk, but yet when, when we're talking, they want to carry on a conversation.
Okay, quiet. I'm asking for quiet. Go on, Michael.
I need people to understand that.
No, I agree. Michael, I agree. Go ahead.
Okay. Number two...
If we could have quiet in the back, please. Yes.
Now, I need to know why this city council can't start on time. The only one that was here on time today was Mr. Buscaino. Sat here all by himself, and then everybody strumbles in 5, 10, 15, 20 minutes later. Now we know why the city of Los Angeles is bankrupt. I know Mr. Ed Reyes is leaving because I come up to speak about it. He starts, we had 13 DUIs in Lincoln Heights on Broadway this weekend. 13 DUIs, and he wanted to put a restaurant next to a school and serve liquor. Yet, today, that property has weed six feet tall. I wonder why is it that when we complain about it, nothing gets done? Because he's punishing the community for not allowing him to go through with a pet project? Shame on him. Let's go back to Mr. Buscaino, the gentleman who got here early. Yet, we have a wall that's falling, a public safety issue here, and he doesn't have his meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday. He canceled it again. Four months without this project being heard. Four months. So now, instead of taking it, we'll take it out of Weezer's hands and we'll put it in Mr. Buscaino's hands. When someone dies on that corridor, Mr. Buscaino, it'll be on your shoulders. Okay? When someone gets hit and run over, I'd like you to go tell the parents, I was too busy...
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Carrion? Mr. Carrion, thank you. I'll give you three seconds. Give him three seconds. Go on, Michael.
It'll be on Mr. Buscaino's shoulders.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, let's go... Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Weezer. I did see your name.
Just on that public comment, we are having a meeting with all the staff that was to speak with Mr. Carrion on that matter this Friday, so that we're just aware that we're gonna, Thursday, Thursday, we're gonna meet on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Michael. All right. Okay, now we're gonna go to item 11. So, Michael, I'm gonna ask you to come back. Item 11 and HollywoodHighland.org. John Walsh, if you could begin to make your way to the podium, and you can take your time, because Michael's up first, and Michael is ready. Go, Mr. Carrion.
Rent escrow. Again, this rent escrow should be illegal. People are coming here and telling you how their properties are being taxed 300% for a late fee. Yet, again, I speak to Mr. Reyes. I brought you the pictures to show you proof that Mr. Reyes was a liar. He stated that the property in question was cleaned. Yet, when I left here, I brought you pictures to show you it wasn't cleaned. So where do we go as taxpayers to hold you accountable for your lack of promptness? Mr. Reyes was the one that came in 20 minutes late to this meeting. We were kept asking, who, who's next? Who's next? Well, Mr. Reyes wasn't here on time. So we're asking you guys to stop putting these properties in rent escrow unless you have properties in your district. We can take your salaries. Why don't we start attaching the, the properties that are delinquent cleanup to your salaries? I bet you one sweet dollar that you won't have them late. So here we are again on a rent escrow project, and you guys, Mr. Carrion was very upset when I made my comment about Hitler. This is what irritates me.
Listen, let's stay on this though, Michael.
This is what irritates me. You guys dictate to people, we're gonna charge you 300%, but we're not gonna clean up our own properties. Shame on you. It's disgusting when we have, you had the nerve to tell me you would go and pick up needles. That's unsafe. The unsafe part was when he said, he didn't tell the people who went to clean those properties that there were syringes and needles there, and that they were, their lives were at risk. And Councilman Reyes didn't do anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Thank you, Michael. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org. Mr. Walsh.
You're doing an excellent job, President Westen, running these meetings.
Thank you, sir.
And I understand, you know, becoming a lime tamer is a good break-in job before you do this job is what the president's job has, is right now. We'd like to point out, you can also come to us, visit us at Walsh Confidential. These, as far as, I, I agree with Mr. Hui. This is a terrible situation. Let me tell you now. Do not pay any bills through the mail. Do it through a computer. You have proof by email that it has been accepted. That is the way to do it now. They cannot lie. Once you send the email, you have proof. That's the problem. Email, 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 because they're lying. One minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And to be exact, 59 seconds. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. I don't... Okay. The card was put in after I called the item. I will let you speak on this, but you know, the way it works is we, you, once we begin discussion on the item, I will not accept cards. So this is the last time this will occur, Mr. Herman. I'm letting you do it because you're a regular, but, and I know you will know not to do it again. Mr. Herman?
Maybe twice. Residents of Los Angeles, are you not frustrated with the ideas of what safety concerns are when it comes to the habability of your home being removed or fined by the city of Los Angeles? 300%? Only 300%? But yet, we have a population of people on our streets that don't even have a home. And yet, we have taxpayers paying taxes on their home, and they're being cited at an outrageous percent to fill the pockets or pad the wallets of certain bureaucracies within the city's departments. Zuma Dog, David Salzberg, had very lengthy discussions with the city in their violations. David Salzberg, Zuma Dog, had very lengthy conversations about this. And I will say to all of you who are going through these unfortunate situations, come to City Hall and speak on your behalf about the violations, the excessive charges you are encountering, because these are violations that the city has enacted upon you, and it's repulsive. And again, how can you engage in taking advantage of the citizens of Los Angeles by these outrageous terms and conditions? Mr. Buscaino, Mr. Ed Reyes, and Mr. Weezer, safety, public safety is the biggest concern. But yet, on the 2,400 block of Verdes Street in Boyle Heights, a, a wall is falling. I don't see engineers or building and safety taking any action. So when you bring an action against all these properties, all these properties, think about the properties that Mr. Michael Carrion is pointing out to you that are endangering the public and take considerate time to address.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Okay, on this item, Madam Clerk, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Alacon for an intro.
Council members, I have the great pleasure of introducing...
Get closer, you can be seen. Hold on, Mr. Alacon. Get close to Mr. Alacon. Mr. Alacon does not bite, contrary to popular belief. I'm looking at the screen, the wide in the screen. He might scratch, but he doesn't bite. Anyway, Mr. Alacon.
It is my pleasure to introduce three members of our extended family. These are, are all relatives of our city attorney, Dion, Dion O'Connell. And so we want to welcome his niece, Irene O'Connell, who just got back from Oaxaca, and she's an artist. His son, Greg O'Connell, who is also an artist of the photography bent, studying in San Francisco. And Carly O'Connell, his daughter, who is the business-minded folk, for, person of the family. And, and we all know why he smiles so much, because these are three obviously wonderful young people that are gonna add great things for our society.
Now we're gonna move back to public, general public comment. Matt Dowd, Matt Dowd. Yvonne Michelle Autry, Mr. Herman, and George Corazarian. If you please come forward.
Good morning. Thank you for recognizing me. Well, during the, the beautiful rendition that was sang by the Indian young girl, a reminder that if we are truly living in the land of the free, home of the brave, land of the free, when those of us exercise our constitutional right to organize and assemble and utilize our freedom of speech, quite often we are maligned and stereotyped, stigmatized, defamed, or demonized as, as terrorists. I'd like to draw attention to an action that occurred this past art walk, a venue that we have enjoyed for nine years, that, that, that draws the members of the community together. It's profitable, was unexpectedly shut down as we were held accountable, I suppose, for the confrontation, or we were reprimanded because of the confrontation between the 99% Occupy LA and the police officers. Well, I do encourage and I do support the constitutional right to organize. I do not encourage any pandemonium that did occur subsequently. Our venue was shut down that night as we were about to perform. We were the only venue shut down that I witnessed. We were black. I don't know if that hadn't, was any indicator, was any reason. I don't think so. I hope not. However, if the directive was going to be given, it should have been given a month ago or a week, or two weeks or three weeks prior to the art walk event, the directive, and the notice should have been given prior to all of our musicians and all of our artists appearing, spending their time and money and energy to perform that art walk event. I think it was not only unprofessional, but it was inappropriate because we did not participate in that action, and that's for the record.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Suits could force LA to put money into sidewalks. Plaintiff's contended that cracks, obstacles are impeding our use of a sidewalk for disabled. Once again, council members, with number of complaints made by people with disability, your actions are slow, unresponsive. You violate federal law, and I ask that the IA, FBI investigate what you're doing with the monies that goes and is allocated on behalf of people with disabilities to have infrastructure repairs done immediately. Instead... Instead, we have this slow response from you. But yet, Mr. Weezer broke down and cried about what's happening in Mexico. What's happening here in the United States of America? Mitt Romney for president, I vote for. And I'm Hispanic, if you want to call me that, but I'm not. So let's go back to subject. Again, when will we bring the conditions of our streets, our sidewalks, to a better condition than what they are? Please remove the obstructions on the sidewalk. Mr. Weezer, you've had the obstruction of that barrier there on Soto for how many years now? Eight years going on nine? And yet, you sit there and say, "I'm working on it." No. You must work on it. I demand that an action take place where the barrier be removed immediately, and you improve the corridor by implementing an idea of, an engineer idea of a wall, to protect the elements of nature from coming into the street on Soto. And yes, Mr. Reyes, remove the weeds in your district before you leave. Thank you.
Is George here? George? George has left the chambers. John Walsh, last public comment caller, John Walsh. Madam Clerk, thank you very much, and all the clerks, for your assistance. Mr. Walsh, you spoke on public comment. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. That completes public comment for the day. Mr. Kocorian, I'm gonna call on item number seven right now, number seven. Mr. Kocorian for an introduction.
Miguel here. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite our CIO, Miguel Santana, to come up and present a brief presentation on our TRAN. This report was heard in the Budget and Finance Committee, but given the importance of the report, I felt that it was important that Mr. Santana presented to the full council as well.
And TRAN is transfer.
Miguel Santana, CEO. I'll give a quick presentation on our TRAN. It's rare that I'm up here delivering good news. But on July 10th, we were able to successfully issue 1.26 billion worth of short-term notes through the TRAN, or stands for the Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes, at 20 basis points. It's the lowest interest rate that the city has ever gone in its history. It's something that is a reflection of a lot of the hard work that all of you have done in ensuring that we have a balanced budget, that we're building on our reserve fund, that difficult decisions are being made around our pension costs, particularly around retirement healthcare. It also was helpful to have the highest ratings from all three rating agencies. We also did unprecedented outreach to investors, having a major investor conference here in Los Angeles, going out and visiting with them from Baltimore to Boston, San Francisco, and Chicago. Overall, we had 25 investors approved for the city credit, which is 39% more from the previous year. We also had a backstop with JP Morgan. I want to thank my staff, obviously, but also our financial advisors, Montague, DeRozan Associates, and our underwriter, Loop Capital, who's here represented by Visa, Smith, JP Morgan, De La Rosa, and William Blair. What's important to point out in the TRAN, it's certainly a validation of the hard work that the city.
Mr. CEO, just for the benefit of the public, the TRAN is the...
The TRAN is our short-term note program. It stands for the Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes.
Tax and Revenue Anticipation, thank you.
The, part of what we wanted to talk to you today briefly is also give you an indication of what our rating agencies are saying about the city. As I indicated, they gave us some, the strongest rated credits that we could get in terms of our score. But they also listed out a number of areas of concern that in some ways could be interpreted as a to-do list of challenges that the city needs to deal with and confront. And I'll walk you through some of these, particularly as we start dealing with next year's deficit, which is projected to be between $200 and $250 million. The most significant, of course, is our ongoing structural imbalance. Fitch specifically said the city's four-year financial projections continue to indicate a significant structural imbalances. They recognize that we've been making progress on the reserves, but continue to be concerned that we haven't quite hit the 5%. So that's an important thing to do. They reference our pending litigation, particularly the Ardon case. The worst-case scenario for that is over $750,737, and under other pending litigation. A discussion about your, the conversation being had, being had around the business tax, specifically S and P states, if approved, S and P believes Los Angeles' rising costs and potentially flat overall revenue could result in larger structural gaps in reference to the conversation around the eventual elimination of the business tax. Discussions around the difficulties of making some tough choices that are before you. Fitch specifically says challenging political and labor relations environment can hinder its ability to respond swiftly to budgetary pressures. Surrounding the discussion around personnel reductions that certainly were held during the budget, Fitch argued, Fitch believes that the structural imbalance will be difficult to resolve without significant economic improvement, a stronger accessible tax base, and further personnel expenditure reductions. And then, of course, the discussion around pension reform, which is not unique to Los Angeles, certainly every major city around the country and here in the state are having on pension reform. Fitch specifically states, building on pension and benefit reforms already implemented, further pension and benefit reform remains necessary to achieve out-year budget balancing. So while we certainly have good news to report on how well we did on the TRAN, we also have challenging, a challenging future ahead, and our bond rating agencies are watching this closely to see how we confront these very difficult issues. I'll close by also stating that while in Baltimore in particular, I was asked to represent the city in a conference regarding minority banking institutions and bankers, and specifically to talk about the city's progress in diversifying the partners that we have both as underwriters as well as financial advisors. It's important to note that from July 2008 to June 2012, the city has completed 33 bond transactions, six competitive and 27 negotiated, of which of the 27, 11 have been senior managed by large firms, but 16 have been senior managed by small to medium firms. Specifically, the TRAN itself was managed, a very, obviously a large undertaking, was managed by a minority-owned firm, and one of the largest projects that firm was able to handle and did so successfully. And then we, in the PowerPoint, we walk you through how we've broadened who we partner with, with a number of minority and women-owned firms, as well as with advisors throughout. So the city was recognized at this conference for doing an outstanding job in reaching out to a small minority and women-owned firms, while still doing well in managing its finances. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just want to refer to page five and ask if, in the future, when you report, if you could, as you see one of the columns, MEB, WBE, LBE, if you could also report whether or not that particular firm that senior underwrote, for example, in this table, whether it was a large, small, or medium firm? If they fall into one of those three categories? That way, we could further see the activity as you just explained verbally, but we can have it for our records. If you could do that, I appreciate it.
We will do that, absolutely.
In addition to that, when, when you said that they highlighted, or I guess complimented us?
Yes.
For having a diversity of large, small, and medium firms, MEB, WBE firms, et cetera. Did, did it ever come up that that was something to be concerned about? Or was that something to be celebrated? Did we, did they point out that we were taking any additional risks or anything like that? What was the commentary on the fact that they noticed that?
Well, there was, you know, the interesting part that many of the people that sat on the same panel as I did, issue the debt within their respective jurisdictions, and they were arguing that they often have to convince the policymakers that, that diversifying who they partner with is the right thing to do, both financially, as well as the right thing to do in terms of building the economy. In our particular case, you know, we reported that it came the other way around. The policymakers were, felt that this was an important thing to do, and, and we responded to that as an office, and have a tradition of doing that, but certainly were encouraged by that work. But one of the issues that was discussed was, how do you balance meeting your financial responsibility to get the best deal for your jurisdiction, while at the same time doing the kind of outreach? And clearly, in our case, we've been able to do both. And so, the recognition came, not just because we're, we're expanding who we partner with in an unprecedented way, but at the end of the day, the city is actually doing better in how it manages its finances, as illustrated in the last deal we did with the TRAN.
That's wonderful to hear, that they, that they, people, excuse me, organizations that actually are there to be critical of us, actually recognize that by not relying almost exclusively on the largest firms, by actually challenging and giving the business to not the largest firms, but medium and small firms, and women-owned firms, and minority-owned firms, that we did not compromise on the efforts for the taxpayer and for the, who we're trying to do the best for, which is the people of Los Angeles. Is that correct? That they, that they noted that we did not compromise?
That is correct.
Or not only did we not compromise, but we actually enhanced our ability to do better? Is that what they said?
That is correct.
Okay, well, at this time, Mr. President, I just want to close by saying, I want to thank Councilmember Bernard Parks, as when I became a councilman, he was already here, and we partnered on working through that policy and making it real. And I'm glad to hear and see that what we anticipated would take place, actually did take place. The City of Los Angeles has done better for it, and we've actually enhanced the activity around the City of Los Angeles, and the welcome mat is open for responsible, effective firms to do business with the City of LA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Reyes.
Just want to take a moment and congratulate my councilman, Cardenas, for his advocacy and councilman Parks. There was a day when we did not have this range of participants, and it's good to see that it's finally happening. And access is so important for our overall economy, especially when we have such diversity. And it sends a different message to those participants in that arena. So again, thank you and congratulations.
Mr. Kocorian to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I think that the takeaway here is that this is good news, because the agencies who make their living off of assessing risk have made a determination that this year, the risk is such that the city can afford to pay a lower yield than we have in years past. That's an indication of confidence that the investment community has in our current fiscal health. And that's very good news. I think it demonstrates, sometimes I think analysis becomes a lot more refined when you're putting your own money up. And so, these folks who are putting their own money up are analyzing the state of our budget exceptionally closely and carefully, because they are the ones who are at risk. And their determination and assessment of our creditworthiness is that it is, we have a solid story to tell about our fiscal health. And that's thanks to the effort that this council and the mayor have made over a number of years, as well as our CIO staff, CLA staff, and others in the city family, to try to reduce our costs, address our structural deficit problem, increase our reserves. All of those things have been positive trends that we've been embarking on. But the other important takeaway from this is that while this report shows that the investment community agrees that there is not the imminent disaster that some of the naysayers out there, you know, want to try to hang on us, there is very serious reason to continue to be concerned about our fiscal future unless we continue to be vigilant about taking these steps and keeping this momentum going. So as we're looking at another quarter of a billion-dollar potential deficit next year, I would just ask that members all keep in mind this report and the blueprint that the investment community has essentially provided for us as to how we can continue to maintain that momentum, how we can continue to stay on the right course, which I believe we are now on. So with that, I want to thank you, members, and thank you, Mr. Santana, for your work and for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas, for your comments. Mr. Santana, you and your staff, thank you. This is a note and file. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Good. And thank you for all your staff over at the CIO's office, Mr. Santana. Next item.
Item six, called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Mr. Alacon.
Yes, if I could ask Mr. Lewis to step forward on this issue. Councilmembers, as you know, tragically, we lost baby chimpanzee at the LA Zoo, and I know that many people have had questions about it. We heard this item in, in committee, and frankly, are at our wits' end in terms of completely understanding this issue. There are some things that you just can't understand. And in this case, you know, I am convinced that we are at a point where we're not going to learn a whole lot more, we simply have to keep observing. The reason it's so important that we continue to observe and learn from this tragedy is because we have a new infant at the zoo, and Mr. Lewis and his crew at the zoo are challenged to ensure that that baby is, is protected. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Lewis to give us a brief history and understanding of, of the circumstances related to the death of the baby infant chimp.
Thank you, Councilman John Lewis, general manager at the Los Angeles Zoo. As the councilman said, we were fortunate on March 6th of this year to have a young female chimpanzee born at the zoo. This was a special event on several levels. We had been asked by our Species Survival Plan for chimpanzees, which is a cooperative program amongst zoos in North America, to bring in a new male, which would then be the father of several offspring. The zoo had not produced offspring in some 13 years because the animals that we had at the zoo were overrepresented in North America, so they didn't want any more offspring from those parents. This introduction of the male went very smoothly. It took several months to make the introduction, and then he was introduced to three of our females, two of which became pregnant, the first being this, the mother of this infant. When the infant was born, it was born in the presence of several other females. This was done for a variety of reasons. Since we hadn't had an offspring in a while, they wanted to make sure that there was a very tight social group around the infant when it was born. Also, at the same time, we had been introducing a new female to the troop. This was a female that had been in several other institutions and unsuccessfully integrated into those troops. Once again, the National Committee asked our team to bring that female here and see if we could introduce her. The introductions have gone well, but during the time of the birth, they were still ongoing. Over the next few months after the March birth, the infant was introduced to a larger group of animals in the troop. We've always had a very large troop. I think at the time, it was 14 individuals. And with each introduction, things were going very well, and had actually gone so well that in mid-June, the infant and its mother had been introduced to all the other troop members at the zoo without any incidents. Things were going really well until on June 26th, one of our males spontaneously grabbed the infant and killed it instantly. This was a surprise on several levels. As I said previously, there have been no aggressive actions towards the mother or the infant prior to this. In fact, the very morning that this incident happened, this same male was seen interacting with the mother and the offspring, actually playing with the baby. And so, it was a very major surprise. We're not sure in talking to our colleagues and what was observed, also talking with field primatologists, why this would happen. It does happen in the wild. Infanticide is not an unknown occurrence, and it happens apparently for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's because a new male or males will move into a troop, and they'll literally kill all the infant offspring to basically start their own families. Other times, it happens because... Other times, it happens because there's a fight amongst troop members and there's an infant in the way. Chimps can get very loud, they can get very aggressive and they're extremely strong. So infants and/or other chimps can be hurt just in the process of a fight. And then thirdly, it can just be a display, a dominance display. They obviously don't have the same attitudes towards offspring that we do, so if there's not offspring in the way, it could be injured. We don't know why the infant was killed by this male. He's been a major part of the troop for years and had not been a problem in this regard. We do, as the councilman said, we have a new infant that was born about two weeks ago, again, from the male that we introduced to the troop. Again, this infant was with the maternal group and that's where it is right now. We are obviously going to proceed extremely slowly going forward. We haven't made the decision, for example, whether the male that was involved in this will ever get access to this infant. Or if it does, it may be after it's reaching more of a juvenile stage. But we are looking at the way the troop acts every day. We are also talking to our colleagues around the country about next steps. In addition to what happened within the chimp troop, this incident unfortunately happened about 3:00 in the afternoon. There were a number of visitors in the zoo, so the visitors were exposed to this attack and saw it happen. And one of the things I think that we have learned as a result of this, when the incident happened and the staff became aware of it, they immediately started trying to move the public away from, from the chimp exhibit so they could assess and see what was going on and handle that incident. Because of the type of attack, people were upset. When they were being forcibly, not physically, but just assertively moved by the staff out of the area, they were upset further by that. So one of the things that we are looking at is developing additional training programs for our staff, hopefully never to use in a situation like this. But there are times when we do have to move people to different parts of the zoo, so find a better way to do it to, again, be assertive, but also be responsive to the needs of the visitors at the same time. So we have that on our plate to deal with in addition to the introduction of the new infant. And I'd be happy to answer questions, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Alarcon. Thank you for your leadership on this.
Councilmembers, I just want you to know that we will continue to observe the situation, particularly with the, the infant that is progressing and keep your apprise. And also, I wanted you to have the opportunity to ask any questions of Mr. Lewis' directory if, if you had them. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Alarcon. And the zoo staff is always available to anyone, if they want to go out and visit to learn more about the great educational institute that the zoo is. There's no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's note and file this. Open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 15, called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon. 15.
Oh, could we have the CLA present? I, I'm, I'm very concerned about this item because, you know, first of all, let me commend Mr. Coretts for his work on the helicopter issue. I don't have any hesitation. And I want to begin, I'll wait till he is paying attention because it's very important.
Mr. Coretts.
Mr. Coretts, I just, I want you to know that I've worked on the helicopter issue in the San Fernando Valley dating back to my days representing Mayor Bradley and I absolutely embrace your desire to reduce the noise. I am deeply concerned, however, that the bill, as written, does not do enough to protect our emergency services, our police and fire departments. And, and although the position says support if amended, it, the, the directions to the Federal Aviation Administration merely say they may exclude those, those operations. I don't think that's strong enough. I think we need to oppose this bill unless they change that provision to say that, that they will, they shall exclude police, fire operations, emergency operations, operations related to utilities that, that could cause harm to the city. And as written, this bill is extremely weak in that regard and, and I, I, I can't support it unless we, unless they change that provision. So I just want to, wanted to make that statement, but I, as much as I want to reduce the noise of helicopters, and by the way, where I live in Mission Hills, at the juncture of the 405 and the 118, the helicopters are always flying over my house. And I, I understand it, but the helicopters that are typically flying over my house are police helicopters. I know that sounds funny, but, but police and, and other emergency helicopters, as well as others. So I, I have some severe reservations. I cannot vote for a support on this bill until they, they direct the FAA to protect our, our police and fire services.
Just a point here, Abak, if, does this need to be acted on today? Because we get police and fire here tomorrow unless we need to act on it today. Mr. Coretts? Mr. Paul Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, this bill, and I didn't write it, but this bill was not targeted at the obvious necessary uses of helicopters. And I have no doubt before it passes that that would be clarified. It is targeted at things like what occurred during Carmageddon I, where literally the only real problem we had was nonstop 24-hour hovering of helicopters above people's homes so that their lives were completely disrupted, not by the traffic as we worried about, but by the helicopters. I have tried whatever I could do to, to deal with this. Even when I had the Carmageddon II press conference, I gave a separate appeal after it was over, just to the press, to not be the problem again this time. I think we have to send a clear message to, to the FAA. I think we already have sent it and even by its introduction, it's very clear that they are now much more responsive on the issue, which is, is the key part of this anyway. But I think if we actually oppose this measure, we would be sending a huge wrong message that the City of Los Angeles actually doesn't give a damn about the problem, which our, our local delegation is trying to solve. So I would rather see this go forward and of course, make our points again to, to the author, to amend the problems out, which I'm sure he's aware of, rather than deflating our support for an item that I think is critical for some of our constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Carter.
Yeah, along the lines of what Councilmember Coretts just mentioned, it'd be great to have the language in perfection or what have you, but all measures going through any legislative process are dynamic. And what I wouldn't want to do is lose momentum on making sure that certainly the people in my district who are affected the most by air traffic noise, because the Van Nuys Airport is in fact in my district and that's where most of the helicopters take off from, whether it's our own police helicopters and/or our own fire helicopters and the private helicopters as well. So the fact that it says "may" when it comes to addressing the issue of not hindering the, the law enforcement helicopters, I think that the bill is in fact in, in well enough condition for us to support. And I think that if, if, I know that if I voted no, or if we voted no as a council or what have you, I think it would hurt the momentum of us sending the message that we are in fact unified when it comes to this, this issue of nuisance. Certainly, I don't think that a, a police helicopter responding to an issue or a fire helicopter responding to an issue, that's not a nuisance. The real nuisance is the news helicopters et cetera not respecting the recommended fly areas and things of that nature. Now, this federal legislation would actually put it in a much more direct fashion as to what the practices should be in and around our community of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, the, I too, as I mentioned, was supportive of reducing the helicopter noise for non-military emergency police or fire service helicopters, but was, was very surprised to see that it was, it wasn't a stern direction to the FAA that they shall exempt those services. It was a "may". And frankly, I have to tell you, as many of you know, my son was transported by fire helicopter to Children's Hospital and died the next day. And, and I would hate to think that a helicopter pilot would have to deviate their path while carrying an injured victim or in other circumstances of emergency because they're worried about the FAA. Those people have to do what they have to do and, and I don't think we should send a, a weak message, we should send a strong message.
There's no other speakers on the queue. Mr. Katian, do you have anything you wanted to say? Thank you. I know we have public comment. Mr. Walsh, please.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We agree 100% with Councilman Alarcon. In fact, our web, our website is backing him for assembly. You got to understand, white people. We white people don't want noise anyplace, anywhere, anyhow. Okay? So if it means, you know, so what? Our position is so what when it comes to noise? And I think you should understand that I live in Hollywood and never have any problems with helicopters. You want to know why? Because that's a silent zone. Because all the theaters are there. You understand? If a helicopter comes into my neighborhood, Niederlander makes a phone call and it's gone. Now, the reason for this bill to begin with is because Berman and Sherman, as you know, the Jewish presence in the valley is being halved, they're losing one of their councilmen to an Hispanic, and they're fighting tooth and nail against one another. And Berman and Sherman are fighting, who hates the helicopters most for the, for the whites people in the valley who are upset by noise? They should come into my neighborhood and see what the noise is. So that's what's really happening in this city. And if you want to know anymore, HollywoodHighlands.org. See you real soon. Goodbye.
All right. There's no speakers on the queue. Now the comment cards complete. Let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
Okay. Fourth with on that matter. Next item.
Council has motions for post and a referral.
So ordered, posted.
That clears the desk.
All right. Any announcements? Yes, the great councilman of the 50th District, a very special announcement.
Mr. Chair, today at City Hall on the second floor, we opened the lactation room. And joining me for the first time, the John Ferraro City Council Chambers is Teddy Chavira, beautiful daughter of one of my staff members, Tracy Chavira. And isn't she beautiful? She is one of our four months and our, one of our newest family members in, in our office. And I want to thank Tracy for giving us this beautiful gift and thank her for her continued commitment and dedication to this great city. Where's Tracy coming up?
Very good, Joe. Tracy, congratulations. Let's give this mom and all moms a big hand and the new baby. Any other announcements? I just do want to announce it again, the great London Games that are closed and the USC and the tremendous success as student athletes that they have, over 25 medals, including 12 gold, nine silver and four bronze. And if USC was an independent nation, they would finish with a medal count of 11th of all those countries. Let's give the University of Southern California some love on that. Joe Buschino.
Thanks, Mr. Labonge. In addition, today, we're going to welcome the Port of Los Angeles, the destroyer USS Wayne Meyer. It's part of the Navy Days Week here in the Port of Los Angeles. So we encourage everyone across the city to come visit. It's a Arleigh Burke-class destroyer, USS Wayne Meyer, this week at the Port of Los Angeles. And we're going to have a presentation on Friday with the, the members of this great ship. Thank you.
Very good, Joe. Any other announcements? Let's stand for adjourning motions, please. Will all members of the public please rise for adjourning members? Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I have two adjourning motions I'd like to ask. We adjourn in memory of Dr. Calvin Coolidge Robertson, Sr., who died July 7th, 2012 at the age of 86. He was born in September 1925 in Calvert, Texas to Pastor Ralston and Lucille Robertson. He was the fourth of six children. In 1941, Robertson family moved to Dallas, Texas, where he graduated from Lincoln High School. Upon graduation, he joined the U.S. Army where he served as a military police in World War II under the leadership of George, General George Patton in Germany. Dr. Robertson laughs as he would tell the fond story of feeling the call to preach while serving in a war with all the bombs around him. After serving his country, returned to attend the Bishop College in Marshall, Texas on the GI Bill and later Morehouse. He married and, his wife preceded him in death in 1948, but they had four children. This year marks the 57th year Dr. Robertson was in the pulpit. He was called as pastor of the First Congregation in 1957 and the Community Baptist Church in West Dallas. After leading the Community Baptist Church for 30 years, he was called to succeed his father as pastor of Exel Missionary Baptist Church in Dallas, where he was still serving as pastor. Dr. Robertson is a national leader and was in his second term, second four-year term as president of the National Missionary Baptist Convention of America when he passed away. He survived by a host of family members. His services were July 13th and 14th in Dallas, Texas. Also, I'd ask to readjourn in memory of Louis E. Logan, Sr., who was born in 1941, passed away August 6th, 2012. Louis initially worked as an orderly and made $50 a week when he began his family. He put his pennies away and together paid his tuition to Morgan State. While at Morgan State, he took a correctional officer exam, became one of the first black correctional officers in Baltimore. He graduated summa cum laude from Morgan State and was given a full scholarship to the New York University's two-year master's program where he majored in marketing and finance. Louis's scholastic acuteness landed him many interesting employment opportunities. His greatest realization of his dream came when he was afforded the opportunity to become deputy to the treasurer of the state of Maryland. He, a devoted family man, he was a disciplinarian, unequivocally a proponent of education, social justice, an advocate of healthcare, enthusiast and avid supporter of the dreams of his three sons and his daughter, Louis Edward, John Kennedy, Robert Anthony and Nicole. He taught his children the importance of thinking critically and acting decisively. Suddenly, on July 23rd, Louis was, suffered a massive heart attack during his daily exercise walk and succumbed on August the 6th, 2012. At Bethel AM Church, he was a faithful member of the Daniel Payne Scholarship Committee and served as cashier, as treasurer until he retired. He then became and served as CEO, financial officer and elder of Roche Community Fellowship, where the pastor, his son, Dr. Louis E. Logan II. He is survived by his wife of 52 years, the Reverend Florence Logan, and a host of other family members.
Second. By Ms. Perry, second by Ms. Perry. Members, I'd like to ask to readjourn in memory of Gore Vidal, the great writer, lived to be 86 years old, wrote over 25 novels, a host of TV movies as well as Broadway shows. Gore Vidal lived in the Hollywood Hills. He died and he's survived by his sisters and brothers. Also, I'd like to ask to readjourn in memory of Carl Fleming. Carl Fleming, a noted editor at Newsweek Magazine, the political editor for the Channel Two News for many years. He was also a mentor to some of us who taught us how to speak and communicate well. He did coaching. Carl Fleming was a wonderful human being. He has a storied history. He just passed away this last weekend in Los Angeles at 84 years old. He survived by his wife Ann Taylor and son Charles Fleming. As we adjourned. Yeah, Mr. Carter.
When you're done, I'd like to add to that.
Okay. All right. Mr. Carter. All right, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. I had the pleasure and the honor to meet Carl Fleming, and he was one of those reporters that was renowned. If you look in certain pictures, for example, in the shooting in Los Angeles of Robert F. Kennedy, he was actually present, and if you'll notice in those black and white photos, he's there as a journalist right on the scene, and he actually was instrumental in reporting in many of the issues in the South in the 1960s where reporters and anybody who was trying to report on the matter would actually get beaten and sometimes killed. And he did it very matter-of-factly, he did it well, and he was a great human being and also a great reporter, and I also had the honor of him sitting down with me a few times and pointing out many of the things that I was doing wrong in my speaking, but more importantly, he told me how to do things right, and so I was very touched that he would actually spend his expertise and his time with me and actually be one of my teachers. So if I could be added as a second on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjournments in the memory. First of all, colleagues, as you may have seen on TV, a tragic accident occurred last Friday in a neighborhood in my district in West Los Angeles where a small plane crashed on the 2100 block of Glendon Avenue. That crash took the life of the pilot Sean McMillan, a resident of Westchester in Councilmember Rosendahl's district. Sean was a partner at the law firm of Greenberg and Traurig, where he specialized in corporate and securities law. In his spare time, he was also a veteran pilot and volunteered much of his time and the use of his plane to transport ill children to hospitals on behalf of Angels Flight, a nonprofit group that provides medical transport for the financially distressed. Sean earned his Bachelor of Science degree at USC in 1967, his Juris Doctor from Harvard Law School in 1970. Neighbors and friends remember Sean as an amazing man, community leader, and first-class bench, and his loss will be felt by many. Also, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ruth Newman, the mother of one of my staff members, Paul Michael Newman. Ruth Newman passed away yesterday at age 86 in the same Manhattan hospital where her three children were born many years earlier. Ruth was born in Brooklyn and raised in Depression-era poverty. She attended Hunter College while working various jobs, got married and had three children, and only stopped working a few weeks ago, having served for decades in the admissions office at the American Academy of Dramatic Arts. In many ways, she was a quintessential New Yorker because she loved, lived, and advocated for culture and the arts as a daily and essential part of human existence. As a young woman, she managed to see and enjoy the likes of the Barry Moores and Catherine Cornell onstage scrambling to get 25-cent tickets, and thereafter, for the rest of her life, impacted by that experience, she devoted endless hours to contacting theaters, museums, and orchestras to help students and others with limited income get to see free or greatly discounted jazz, opera, theater, dance, and all of the arts. Helen Gurley Brown, who also died on Monday, helped brand the term cosmopolitan in terms of style and lifestyle, but Ruth Newman, like many women in New York and across the nation, has helped make it possible for people to experience the arts firsthand at a time when arts programs have been slashed and prices for those that remain have too often become exorbitantly out of range. Ruth also appeared in some plays, and although she lived in Los Angeles briefly a number of years ago, she does have what might be termed an unofficial Hollywood passport. Name me a listing on the IMDB website due to her performance in the 1980s cult horror film Basket Case. A more crucial legacy is that she was adored by generations of students, many of whom now work in the entertainment industry here in Los Angeles, and was loved by many friends and family. She was survived by half-brother Jesse, by her children Debbie, Kathy, and Paul, her daughter-in-law Renee, and a granddaughter Gabrielle.
Thank you very much. That concludes, Madam Clerk, call the roll. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.